Morning, everyone. Why don't we go ahead and get underway? We have a lot of things to discuss this morning. Mr. Pinkinson, how long? What time is it?
Eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty. So we have a few hours to really get to some of the meat of this, and we'll talk as long as we need to after that. But welcome to our first repeat as the new board. Someone clerking the meeting? Are we just doing this ourselves?
Clerk's in the meeting.
There he is. Okay. I guess I should ask you, what's the first item of business?
Adapt the agenda.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed.
I've got a question about whether we wanted to move transportation funding up in deference to Commissioner Pinkinson. He said he wouldn't be for the year for the whole day. Did you want to do that?
If you don't mind, Mr. Chair, if we could go. Obviously, number one is probably the key thing. And if we could do next, because I don't think that'll take very long, in transportation.
So one, three, five becomes one, two, three. And I'll second the motion.
And then we'll do review and revisions. Review and revisions of the guiding principles for it.
Yeah.
And then five. Okay. All right. With those changes, then, we have a motion that was seconded, right? Somebody seconded that?
Yeah, I seconded. Thank you very much for doing that.
No problem. Would anyone from the public like to comment on the agenda that we set for ourselves? All in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. First up, managers' hiring process. We had a process that was spelled out for us by staff that involved hiring a firm, a kind of headhunting firm, to go out and find someone for us. Commissioner Hutchinson has put an alternative proposal on the floor, which I don't have in front of me. Is it here?
No, I didn't bring it. I can quickly summarize it. It's basically having a combination of the staff and the commission doing the work. And I have one little nuance that I could add to it. But the idea is to save money, because after all, I am a fiscal conservative. We could save the eighteen to thirty thousand, or whatever it's ultimately going to cost, and I think do just as good a job, if not better job, both finding the candidates and then putting them through an interview process. And the nuance on it is that... I was talking to Walt Berry last night. He's retired from the property appraiser's office, but has been through a number of management hiring processes before, and is very keyed into the managers' associations and that sort of thing. He said on a pro bono basis, he would be willing to provide some staffing of this to help poncho it through the process. And by that, he would, for instance, be willing to assist in looking at resumes or if people, candidates were calling and had questions, and it was something that staff, our staff wasn't comfortable dealing with, that he'd be willing to do that, just the way that a management firm would. There may be others that would make that same offer. But so anyway, I would, just for the purposes of discussion, I would move that we accept that as the way we go about our business. And if that fails for any reason, I'm more than happy then to go through the consultant process, but I think we should try to do it ourselves first.
I have a couple of thoughts on that. Anybody else want to address it first?
I guess if you want to try and do it in order.
Go ahead.
I remember you did mention this last Tuesday, and we always appreciate looking at all the different options we do have. And it is good to see that we're thinking of how to try and be as fiscally conservative as possible. On the other hand, a position such as the county manager, I think is just such a big and important position in that you have search firms here. And granted, all of them were not equal, and I think that's part of our discussion. But I think there were enough of them, or a couple of them, that were so extensive. I think that's a pure network. And I know from my experience of looking for top positions in terms of companies and corporations and others, I just think that they have an inroad, and they have this network that they have established so strongly throughout the years that they would be in a much better position to cast that net as far and wide as possible to kind of sift through all the options and possibilities, and then, of course, bring us that candidate that would most suit our needs. And from these proposals, it's going to be an extensive process in terms of interviewing each of us and really trying to determine what the priorities are, or at least what we're looking for in a candidate, et cetera. And then, but far and wide, they have access to, I think, county managers that may not necessarily be in that position of looking for a job or in that typical net, but kind of under the radar that I think these folks have really good access to. So my, after I had thought about that particular option during the week, I think I was definitely inclined to continue with the process with a professional search firm, and especially some of these that have had very good success records in terms of finding county managers and city managers. So that's my inclination, and that's why I would probably prefer to stick through this. And then I'd also like to hear our, one of our directors or somebody that is going to be involved, Betty Baker and even the county manager, to go ahead and see what thoughts they have on it as well, to see what their inclination is. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Lee, you got any thoughts?
I think that, and Hutch, just like you, I'm kind of fiscally conservative myself. I think from record indications, but anyway. I think that, I think it's laudable that you're thinking about the money situation. But I think this may be an instance when I think we want to have as much expertise and background knowledge going into it as possible. My impression, after looking through these, is that, it's my understanding that the state of Florida is a little different from a lot of other states as far as what goes into the knowledge base for a county manager, as well as the things that they have to deal with as far as sunshine and all that. And I think that getting somebody who has an understanding of that, a full knowledge of that, would be beneficial. You know, I don't know. My inclination is go with the search firm and go from there. But I would suggest that, I know that in conversations with the board of directors with the Florida Association of Counties, that is something that, you know, as we go through this process, if the board is so inclined, I don't think it would hurt for Rick to call Chris Ollie and have a conversation with him as far as their ability to help search...
Sorry, who's Chris Ollie?
The director of the Florida Association of Counties. Because I know that they have helped in that capacity find some county managers. I don't know what the charge is. Obviously, they didn't send an RFP, but that might be a conversation worth having just because they do have a lot of knowledge about the different counties and what other counties have experienced as they've gone through the search process.
Okay. Got any thoughts, Trump?
But I, you know, I'm really, it's great to see that Hutch is looking out for the pennies and dimes, and I look forward to that process as we go along.
That's right.
And thank you.
The only thoughts I have is that with my experience on the city commission and stuff like that, we've always hired firms to do the searches. So I'd be more inclined to depend on the professionals to bring those recommendations back. I have no problems in terms of addressing some of the stuff Commissioner Hutchinson presented. But I think that if we decided to go that route, that we probably should use the Association of Counties to help in that process. If they're, I mean, that's their job. They know folks nationally, so that could be added to it. But I'm more inclined to stick with the professionals.
Got it.
Mike, I've got to go about something, Matt.
Good.
You might want to talk with Ms. Baldry about how we went through hiring a library director. I don't know if, we had this great mechanism, the board of trustees, that did the lion's share of the work. I don't know if a search firm got them to that point, or whether the people just sent in applications and the board of trustees went through the process. So it might be good to hear from Ms. Baldry how the library district handled their two searches.
Could I say just one last thing? I think when we're looking for somebody, there's really two aspects to it. One is getting the candidate pool that has everybody in it that we could possibly want. And so that's the first job of the firm, is to cast the net wide enough and then gather in everybody we want. And then the second is, the thing that they're going to do essentially for us is shortlist it. And then the rest is up to us. And we're going to interview them, and we're going to, you know, they're going to be an intermediary in negotiating a contract, which I'm not sure we even need that either. But nevertheless, I have no doubt that we can get a huge applicant pool. Elacho County is a great place to work. And already, I mean, I know of people who are thinking about applying just on, you know, with the news that's out there. If you go to the NACO site, they've got an extensive website that people watch. And this firm is going to do that. They're just going to put an ad on the NACO site, and that's going to fill their coffers with applicants. And then they're going to sort them down. So anyway, my idea doesn't have support here. That's fine. So I think we, I withdraw my motion and think that we should then go about the selection process.
Well, I'd like a couple of comments. By the way, I know I'm chair, but during these retreats, the chair typically gets to participate in the discussions. So I'm going to always wait until y'all are done. I'm going to say a few things as we go on. And a couple of thoughts. First of all, I mean, the term fiscal conservative gets used a lot. In my mind, it doesn't mean spending less. It means judicious use of resources, that you carefully consider how you spend your money. And given the consequences of a county manager, who may be here for a decade and all that they do, the amount of money we're talking about seems trifling, if they can get us a better product. And one of the themes that kind of emerged as I read through all those packets was that, and I remember reading specifically in one of them, and it really stuck in my head, is that it may often be the case that the best applicants are not looking for a job. And if we simply sit back and wait for people who are looking for a job to respond to our want ads, essentially, we may not, we may be shortchanging ourselves. If that's a real thing, if it's really true that these headhunting firms really do have a wealth of cultivated resources that they can go to that we're not going to get, then it seems to me that will probably significantly broaden the search and the quality of the search. I agree with Hutch that once that part is done, a lot of the other things that these firms are offering to do, we could just easily do ourselves. And I'm assuming that includes negotiating the contract, or our staff feel comfortable with that part of it. So some of these things, we may not need to pay them for. But casting the net, as you said, I'm more comfortable going with a firm that has been doing it for decades and knows a lot of the people in the field.
So then I would say, our choice is, do we go with the county commissioner rankings of these firms, or do we go with the staff ranking of the firms? Because I think both have been done. I turned in my rankings. I don't know if you guys did.
Well, that's part number two.
On the rankings, I did not do the scoring thing because I read through them all, and two or three of them fell through the cracks immediately. And again, we're judging based upon their application. That's all we know. So you're kind of judging on style and content, how sophisticated they seem. I mean, if you can't organize sentences into grammatically correct form in something that important, you're probably not somebody we want to do business with. But the three or four top ones are all pretty much the same to me, and throwing a dart at the board. And I could have gone through the process of assigning points, but I didn't feel like that was genuine. But I'm more comfortable allowing our staff, who do this all the time and work with these firms, to make a recommendation, and let's take it from there, whatever the board wants to do. But I could not honestly distinguish between the likely product of the top three or four firms. And if our staff has some insight into this, I'd like to hear about it.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
We only have one envelope today. An envelope. Because we didn't get the full responses from all the commissioners. But so we're prepared. Betty and the staff have provided, prepared an evaluation. We're prepared to give our recommendations. You've all read them. You've got your own notes, or however you did it. Doesn't have to be numerical or anything else. And the question then is, is there enough information today for you to agree on selecting a firm? Or do you want to invite their on standby? Do you want to invite two, three, or four of them to come in and make presentations to you on Tuesday? That's what Tuesday's been set aside for at this point. It's available to you, and they're on standby to do that. But you're free to make a decision today to direct us, based on the information that you've gleaned from the applications and the presentation that Betty will give in a minute. You can make a decision today and direct staff to go negotiate a contract and bring back those results in January, because the next step is probably the single most important step. And that is for you to meet with the firm that we've contracted with and give your criteria that are, you know, above and beyond, have that discussion with them, that are above and beyond the basic criteria that you want them to include in their kind of weeding out process. And going back to the earlier discussion, you can direct them to, give us the top 20. You can pick a number. If you want to do the homework, give us the top 50. But they've already gone through and checked the resumes, done the background checks, and so on and so forth. And here's the top X number. And that can be a discussion, an ongoing discussion as you go through it. Typically, the first cut that you get from the search firm is going to be in that 10-plus range. And then you have the discussions. Of course, now we're all in the sunshine. You have the discussions and decide which ones, out of those, you want to interview. And then they come in at public meetings for the interview. And that's going to be somewhere between three and five typically. But you can pick those numbers. And, you know, all of this information will be public records as they're going through it, because we'll probably have all of the applications. Anyway, the next step is, if you decide today, we'll go back and work with the firm and come up with it, hopefully by January 8th. If not, no later than the 22nd, and come up with a contract for you to approve. And then we'll start the process at the next meeting and bring them in so that you can decide, you can let them know what you want, what you're looking for in a candidate.
I'm comfortable making a decision today based upon your recommendation. Do you have a top rank? Do you prepare to? As long as it's not one of those two or three that I have made some problems with. I didn't see a big difference between the others. They all seem to offer the same thing and say it pretty much the same way.
Don't run away, Betty.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
And I know Hutch also had a couple of thoughts as well. What I was thinking that we could maybe try and, and I don't know if this is the day to do that, and that is kind of what we had set next Tuesday aside for, but as quickly as we can try and get through this. And I think we need to put a little time limit on it because we have a lot of other things that we're going to try and address this morning as well. But if we wanted to go ahead and at least start discussing it, and I think maybe Ms. Baker here has, I was just going to ask her a couple of main questions to see which one of the, who they thought the top three were. And based on who they thought the top three were, we could ask some basic questions. I just have a couple of really quick, basic questions to ask that will really help me determine, and I don't know if maybe others have, and I'll explain why I think those questions are just basic. And then that way, if you all agree, that's great. If not, and you have your own types of questions, then we can go ahead and at least narrow it down to the top two or three. Because out of seven, it's still quite a few, at least from what I saw here, seven or eight. That's still a lot to choose from. But when you're narrowing it down, then at least you have something to work with. Then we can decide, do we want to make that choice today? Or do we want to invite them in on Tuesday? And I think three is probably about the maximum that you really want to deal with. Two is too few. Four is too many, I think. And I think three, and five clearly is way too many options. It's like buying a home. You can't really, you have to narrow it down to the top choices, like anything else. So that's, fellow commissioners, would be what I think would be a great opportunity to go ahead and approach it in that manner, I reckon.
That's true. That's correct. That's the choice that we're suggesting that you make today. We have the top three. Betty can discuss that with you. From the staff, you can compare that with your notes that you've taken. And if you want to bring three in, they don't have to be the staff's top three. It's your decision. If you want to bring three in to ask those questions that you might have before you make the final decision, that's what next Tuesday is for. So Betty can present this if you wish, Mr. Chair.
I'm, one of the things I note about the scoring here is that some of them have a wide range, and some of them have a very narrow range. And the one that I scored highly was our number four on this list here, the Mercer Group. And if you look at the range there, 75, 80, and 84, very tight range. They just barely missed the cut. The Anderson, which is the number three one, they had all the way from 67, which is one of the lower scores, all the way up to 96. So there was a big disparity there. Anderson's also from California. A lot of their experience was out there. My suggestion would be Slaven, Murray, and Mercer. Mercer has the additional benefit, two benefits. One is they were the firm involved in our previous county manager hire. And their principal who would be working for us is W.D. Higginbotham, a former City of Gainesville manager, and a pretty good one. And so he's very familiar with the area. So my recommendation would be either we add Mercer as a fourth for us to consider, or we substitute Mercer for this Ralph Anderson and save a plane flight from California for somebody, since they're close anyway.
If I guys got any thoughts before we, I'm going to ask our staff what they think.
That's what I was going to do, actually. I was going to say, what was their thinking and why they chose? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I guess my experience, I have no problems with two and three, but I do have a problem with number one. That, just going back to my days as a city commissioner and the Slaven management. I did not like them. I did not like them. I didn't like the way, the process we went through. I'm kind of, I don't know if it was the county man, I mean, the city manager or the equal opportunity director. I just can't remember which one it was. But I just didn't like the way they handled things. We had to do some type of weighting score or something among the commissioners, that kind of stuff. I did not like that. I did not like how it seems that they were catering more to staff than they were the commission. It was just a lot of issues I had with them. And nothing against the firm, but it's just that I didn't like the way that was carried out. I didn't like the way things were done, pretty much. That's why earlier in the Tuesday, I stated, I didn't call the company's name, but I guess today I have to because it's on this list. So I just have some reservations about that. And if they're going to be in the top one, I won't vote for them. I'm going to just let you know, I'll be out front. I will not support them. Thank you.
Okay. Did staff go through the process of ranking them? Are you prepared to give your recommendation today?
That's what this is.
Please do.
Mr. Chair? We did have a...
That's our ranking.
Nope, that's their ranking.
Oh, I thought this was the commissioners'.
Nobody turned ours in.
I turned mine in. You did. I did.
All right. So you're the only one who turned in this?
Oh, I turned mine in.
Okay. Two turned them in? Okay.
I'd say that we stay charged with this situation, don't you?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm with you.
All right. If you could, then, please just kind of explain your recommendation.
We did rank these, but before I discuss the ranking, one of the concerns about these type of situations is the search firm would be working for you. And staff ranks based on criteria. But for this process to be successful, that person has to be satisfactory to you and you're comfortable with them, because this is the most critical position that you will be filling. And if the search firm doesn't work with you or in sync, then the process could go south. So therefore, we rank these, but we also rank them with a little concern because what we may be looking for is not what you're looking for in a search firm. We look at technicalities, who presents the best number. We look at issues of diversity and some of those things. But when it's all said and done, if it's not someone that you're comfortable with, then it may not be in the best interest. So we looked at, Slaven was number one. Each, the rankings were individual. We didn't consult with each other. Each person ranked based on their own concept and what was given to them. And Slaven was number one. Bob Murray, the associate, was number two. And Ralph Anderson, the associate, was number three for staff. And again, we looked at the technical aspects. They could do their packages. And it was pretty clear that for me, from my ranking, that three of them kind of rose to the top based on their presentations, their written presentation, and then some of the others dropped below. Over the years, since we have both been in the HR business, we are familiar with all of them, and we know the capabilities.
That's another piece that I'd love to hear.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Well, I'm comfortable with any of these. If we have one commissioner who has some personal experience with one of them and doesn't like them, then I'm fine bypassing them. I have no personal experience with any of them. I'm assuming they all offer roughly the same slate of services.
They do.
If they've been in business for a couple of decades, they probably have all developed their own pool of personal contacts. And I'm comfortable with any of these. And I don't want to spend a whole lot of time evaluating who we're going to pick to do the evaluating. And I'd rather focus our energy on, once they've developed a big diverse pool for us to consider, let's start talking to those people. But, you know, whatever the will be.
Well, I would move that we put Bob Murray and the Mercer Group into our pool to interview next Tuesday.
So you all do want to interview the firms?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I just have a couple really quick questions, one thought. And Commissioner Chastain, I understand your experience with them, and that is an important thing, because we don't even have any experience with any of these folks. How long ago did you have your situation, or your experience with them? It was probably a long time ago, 10 years ago?
About that.
Yeah. And the thing is, 10 years is a long time for a company, at least to learn a lot and understand. So, you know, if it would have been a couple of years ago, I'd be a little more concerned about that. And so that's my only call of wonder, because here, based on their rankings, or at least what they're looking for, they've chosen to be number one. And based on something that, you know, experienced 10 years ago is a long time for, that's my only wondering, and I'd like to hear a little more, because I had a couple of questions, just to number, to see about the rankings. What I wanted to see as well is who's had the most experience hiring the most county managers out of these. And I was hoping to see somewhere, because in some of these I could find them, and others I couldn't, in terms of actual positions filled. Do you know offhand on your list here who had the most, the second most, third most in that number right there? Because I think that criteria is a pretty big one. It's like, you know, how many houses have I sold? If I've sold, you know, three good ones, well, maybe I got lucky three times. And if I've sold 500 or 1,000, well, somebody's been around the block, or an inspector who's done 1,000 inspections, they know exactly what they're looking for and how things work. They're not perfect, but...
Mr. Chair, probably Mercer and Slaven have done the most county and city managers. And that was one of the concerns I had going through this. Some of the companies, I really liked their approach, but I was concerned they were in Texas and California. And if you're interested in finding somebody from Florida or the southeast, I don't know that. And so my rankings are probably going to be different than yours. Or if you'd rather, you don't care if they're based in Ohio or California. But they will not have the connections with the Florida people to recruit for you. So if that's important to you, then my rankings are probably going to be off from yours. And I like the approach of one, I don't think it made the SGR strategic. I really liked their approach, but they're basically Califor, I mean, Texas and Oklahoma.
I liked them as well. When I saw that whole thing, I thought, they were top of mind.
They were my favorite on the approach, but I rated them down a little bit because they're... they're mostly based in Texas. And one of the principals had most of his experience in fire and emergency management. So again, I'm not knowing what you're looking for. I'm concerned my ranking is going to be off from yours. I've had direct experience with both Mercer and Slavin. I think Slavin hired Bob Fernandez many years ago when the Mercer was reed.
And then, so between the, and then who is the third highest filling of county managers and/or?
I'd have to look at them again, Mr. Chair. A lot of them, they're not as many county managers, just so you don't have as many.
Well, I saw that. And some of the, one of those actually had all city managers, but no county manager experience. And I'm thinking, but then at the same time, some of the city managers are as big as our county. I mean, you know, it just depends on which city or even larger. So it was hard to, you know, when I went and put on those kind of focus blinders on, I realized, well, you know, it's funny, we think of a city manager as somebody in a much smaller community subset of Alachua, but when you're thinking of city manager of Tampa, the city manager of Jacksonville, city manager of Orlando, I mean, that's a big job in and of itself right there. So, but, so I had a hard time discounting whether I was just looking for county manager experience, positions filled, or whether city managers was part of that. And if that is kind of a combination of both, who would be the third highest? And that was, that was one of the things I was mostly looking for in terms of, in terms of who would have that experience. Now, one of the things too, and I know, I understand the issues about understanding Florida, issues Florida law, but like anything else, that you can learn pretty quickly as well. I mean, it's kind of the same structure overall. And I don't mind going out to other states that have had, I mean, as long as that person has had a track record of turning counties around or turning an economic environment around or doing the things that we're really going to be stressing for here, I'd love to see, you know, those types of candidates that would love to take a challenge, to go ahead and take the best resource-filled county and actually turn it into the most prosperous county, you know, in the state. And what a transformation and an opportunity for somebody who loves a challenge. So I'm looking, you know, so I would think, you know, if you go ahead and try and make this into a country-wide search in terms of somebody that's looking for that, and maybe there's other states and other, I wouldn't want to just limit that to Florida. Of course, if they're from Florida, well, you know, that's wonderful as well.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I don't know if you would find this approach helpful, once we have the, complete this discussion in terms of getting an understanding of Wyss staff-ranked and what your individual preferences are. You may want to take the approach that you do with advisory boards and ask each one of the commissioners to present their top three and see how that plays out, see who gets the most votes, if there's any that are unanimous amongst the board, and just have each one of you present your top three and see how that works out and use that as a basis for a subsequent motion. Just a thought to put on the table.
We can do that. I guess the first decision, if the board does actually wish to interview these people at our Tuesday meeting, then I guess what we need to do is decide which three or so we're going to invite. And then at the time, so we're essentially taking that vote today.
To determine if you want to bring two, three, four in on Tuesday, or if you decide that you're going to direct staff to negotiate with a top firm.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess it doesn't matter about a company ten, twelve, thirteen years ago. It doesn't matter. Their, their way they do business probably didn't change in that period of time because they feel that's probably a successful model that they have. I just didn't like how they did what they did when I was on the city commission. So I still, I don't care what you say, I'm not going to support the firm. Any other firms, I have no problems with, but I know my experience with Slavin was not great. That's all I'm going to say. And I'll leave it at that. And, you know, and if we're going to go down this road, then I think I'd be more than willing to attain Commissioner Hutchinson's idea of us doing it ourselves, you know, if we're not going to get any consensus here. I'm not trying to be a spoiled child or anything like that. I had dealings with them and I did not like it. I think that I kind of stated that when I was a commissioner to them. So, you know, I, some things I remember and some things I forget, but I definitely don't forget them. And then sometimes it's better to use other firms. Slavin has been used a lot in Alachua County, Gainesville, Mercer Group. All of those groups have been used quite frequently. Sometimes it's best to get some diversity, use different firms, get different ideas, a different approach to things. Who knows? But I have no problem with the Mercer Group, but I do have a problem with Slavin. I don't have a problem with Bob Murphy and Associates. I don't have a problem with Ralph Anderson Associates. So I have, I have no problems, but I'm telling you, I'm going to be adamantly opposed to Slavin. And I don't know how many times I have to say that.
Thank you. One time is sufficient. We heard you loud and clear. And I have no problem with any of these top firms. Again, I think that we're kind of, and I agree with the emphasis on experience in finding county managers or at least managers in comparable positions. And I actually was personally not that impressed with the Texas firm. For one, one of the reasons was they didn't have any county manager searches. And most of the municipal searches they've done were for actually small towns, pretty small towns. And I also wasn't terribly impressed with their strong emphasis on psychometric testing. And maybe that's something we need to discuss a little bit. Do we want to do that? Do we want to do psychological profiling of the people we're prepared to select? Because that was another kind of distinction. Some of the firms emphasized that, some offered that you want to pay extra.
We're done. We're done. I feel that test alongside.
And then some of them didn't mention it at all. So that's another thing, I guess we're going to have to decide what we want to contract with that. I'm comfortable making a decision today and picking a firm. We can do the interview, but it seems we're going to be reacting more to how the individual, how personable they are when they come and speak to us. I don't think there's a strong correlation between that and the effectiveness they're going to, with which they're going to conduct the search. I'm really looking for someone who's been in the business for twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, has found a lot of comparable type positions, and any of them are all pretty much the same. Hutch?
I would move that we invite Murray, Anderson, and Mercer to come to us on Tuesday to give half-hour presentations, and then we'll pick one at that point.
I'll second that.
Motion in a couple of seconds. That bodes well. To invite those three firms. By the way, do we have anything else on the agenda? That's the ten o'clock meeting we're talking about, right? I thought that we, I thought we bumped something to that meeting. I know you had a list of things that you wanted to bring up at that meeting. It sounds like they're going to get the part.
Let me just ask a question. You said half hour is the right length of time for them to make a presentation?
Half hour.
All right. So they get a half hour, then we can question them and then, okay. Now, can we ask them not to listen in on the other presentations?
Certainly.
Well, we, you're going to be in the sunshine.
But we could certainly ask them.
You can ask them, but you can't demand it.
Right.
I'd say staff, staff should handle that.
They're not likely to deny our request under the circumstances.
I'm sorry. And I understand exactly what you're talking about because the first person obviously has the disadvantage of not having heard the other two. But you could possibly overcome that a little bit by saying that the one and two will have five minutes to address certain things that may have come up. So we can go ahead if somebody, you know, and just kind of make it even or else go to the back. I mean, something, I understand that.
They're going to hear our questions, understand the angle that we have, and then they're going to tailor their sales pitch, and it's going to become more of a sales pitch. I really think.
We'll leave that to staffs.
Mr. Chair, we, staff is very familiar with how to, and we will take care.
All right, thank you. All right. This motion on the floor has been seconded. Further discussion? Anyone from the public want to comment on the action about the date? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? All right. We're taking the next step. Thank you. The next up on the agenda was Flow Lee.
I'd be happy to. This is a group that was formed kind of as a result of the permit permitting application for the JEA and that permit that went through sometime last year. Actually, it went in a good deal, but a good deal before then, and time, enough time elapsed that they were able to respond to it. And I think in three counties, three counties came together and invited a whole bunch of other counties and cities to join in the conversation about how do we handle the issue of water as we go forward? And, you know, the catalyst was obviously that permit, but, and that was one of the things that was initially discussed as far as, you know, what are we going to do? And the legal component became a focus initially. And since then, a number of conversations they've organized, they've, they've formed a, Dave helped me with this. What would you, it's a semi-governmental.
Right. They formed an authority by signing an interlocal agreement. Do you know which, who the, which counties and cities have signed the interlocal? Because I have the draft.
It's on my desk.
Because I, I had the draft. They had like twenty-five, but they don't have that many that have signed up.
They don't have, they don't have anywhere near that.
But they have more than one, so they have an authority now created.
And are water authorities in the statutes, is there a certain set of rules, things they can do and not do?
No, it's established in the interlocal agreement what they can do. And then they become a government authority that has to abide by all the laws in Florida. So just like us, they're, they're, they're subject to, like, they're subject to sunshine, they're subject to preemption, water management district preemption, that kind of thing.
And essentially, it's, the conversations have morphed into three different, four different committees. There's a legislative which I'm on. There's a scientific, there's an executive, and there's public information. And I think, truthfully, I think, and giving full credit to Columbia County, they have, they have really kind of taken a, they initially put in $250,000 last year, and they again put in 250,000 this year, although probably the amount of money that's been spent has been closer to about 30,000. They hired a lady named Lou Merritt to be the executive secretary. And as we go forward, you know, a few, it's somewhat frustrating in that there have been some meetings and not a whole lot's been done. And, but however, in the last few meetings, it would appear that something positive can come out of this. And where I think the biggest will be through the legislative portion, that as a, as a body, we can go to Tallahassee as, you know, a number of counties, five or six counties as well as some cities, and lobby for, you know, here's what we think of the water issue. And, you know, I think from that perspective, it can be beneficial. They drafted a legislation that we haven't formally reviewed, but we will take, we will, Chris is going to be kind enough to meet with me and go over the nuances. The legislative committee is trying to schedule an appointment with Adam Putnam because he's taken a lead role as far as water issues on the cabinet to get his impressions and maybe some, some help as far as who we might, might talk to to sponsor the bill. And when we get the, when we finally vote on something, then, you know, if y'all want to draft first, I'd be more than happy to supply y'all with that. And, but, but my recommendation up to this point, my recommendation has been, let's just see what they're going to do before we spend any money. And, and truthfully, I think what we are, I'm more than happy to do all the driving to do whatever needs to be done. I'm happy to make that commitment. As far as what the county is concerned, I, if, and we talked, Chris Berg and I talked, and he said that since they're going to the meetings anyway, they will be happy to supply whatever in-kind services they can for the next, you know, for the next little while anyway, to see what direction this organization takes. I would say let's, at this point in time, as far as a commitment to money, I would say I think that there's enough money that's, that's sequestered already and that perhaps our strategy should be over the next six months, that we take a look to see what this, this group is going to do and evaluate, you know, whether or not we want to commit to some sort of financial input after we've determined whether or not it looks like they will be solvent, number one, and, and something that we're, that we're willing to commit time and effort to. So I'll be happy to answer whatever questions y'all have. It's an interesting group. It's, it's Columbia County, Baker County, I think Lafayette, Gilchrist, maybe Levy, Clay, Bradford, counties I'm pretty sure are ones that are in there. And then some of the cities that are, that are, that are in, the City of Gainesville, at this point in time, I don't believe, I haven't seen any representatives there. I know that, I know about that, but at this point in time, I don't think that they have, they've decided to put any, anybody up there to, you know, to have input in the conversation. So questions I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess you had stated earlier that Lake City had put in $250,000.
Twice.
Twice. So they put in over a half million dollars into this.
Columbia County.
Columbia County.
Columbia County.
Okay.
Well, I guess my question is, so what are the funds they're going to be used for, I guess?
As it stands right now, each committee was asked to submit what they expected their expenses to be. I think the ones, the scientific committee has not really come forth with a plan, but I would imagine that they might have to spend some money if, if there is some issue that comes up that requires some scientific knowledge. I know that this could potentially be an area where our environmental protection could help because they may already have the information.
So they have spent the money, they just moved it?
No. They spent, they spent probably $30,000 of the 500,000. So it's, it hasn't, they haven't spent a whole lot. The public information could, obviously, they could spend some money. I don't think it's astronomical now at this point in time. The legislative committee is just going to be a matter of, you know, if, if somebody wants to get reimbursed for travel or something along those lines, because you can't take any legislatures out for lunch or anything. So, you know, there's not going to be any expense there. And I think those would be the three committees that I, that I can think of right offhand that might spend some money. So, you know, truthfully, Chuck, I don't know why they'd spend $250,000 at this point in time, other than if something happened. I will tell you a point, and where, where the initial onslaught was about, let's go out and challenge permits. And it's my impression that should we, which has been, where I've been the most hesitant to say, let's go forward with this because we can spend a lot of money challenging permits against people that have a lot more resources than we do. And if that was going to be the thrust of the committee, which is kind of what I thought in the first few meetings, then, then I didn't think that that would necessarily be the most prudent use of our time and money. So it looks like they're getting away from that. And they have hired, they, they do have somebody on contract, a legal firm out of Tallahassee. So, you know, there could be potentially some, some, some money spent there. But it doesn't, you know, and Rick and I have had discussions that, should we choose to, to enter into this, this interlocal agreement, that perhaps somehow we say, we'll be happy to do this, we'll be happy if we choose to commit money. But the legal portion of it, let's kind of put that out there and we decide whether or not we want to do that. Because it seems to me that you could blow through that $500,000 in no time flat if you get into a contest with, challenging a permit with Jacksonville Electric Authority. So in a nutshell, that's, that's, I don't think that that is going to be the focus of this group now.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'm assuming that they also used the funding for like professionals in water or something to help with some of the scientific stuff?
They will, when that time comes. They had the offer the other day of somebody, somebody from, where was it? Tampa, who volunteered pro bono his services, you know, to, to help with this, with this group. So, but yes, I'm sure that.
And I'm assuming some of the dollars would be used for lobbyists to help them if a bill is presented or something they're against?
Perhaps.
To help lobby against?
Right. We need to, you know, and. We need to, you know, and, and the bill that, that they're discussing, I don't think it's going to be ready for primetime this time, because simply, you know, the, you know the script much better than I do, but I don't think, I don't see us having it ready before the, you know, the legislative session starts, in which case it's too late, as I, you know.
Not really. I think that it's the second week of February is when you have to have bills submitted and filed and all that, somewhere in the middle of February. So, but anyway.
I don't know if we'll be ready.
Now, the purpose of this group, I'm, I'm really trying to get the purpose of this group.
The purpose of the group is to, is, is to try to find a way to secure water for now, for the use, current uses, and into the future. It was, because there is a concern, and obviously, the height of this was during the droughts last year, and that was providing a big catalyst, but, but it's to try to find the balance between the utilities, the agriculture community, you know, all the different stakeholders utilizing water, to try to find as we go forward, that, that balance that will be able to ensure between conservation and all the other things that are, that will go into this, this conversation, that we go forward, that, that our kids and grandkids have enough water, enough quality water.
I guess the only concern I have, Mr. Chair, it, it sounds good, but when you have, like, a water management district, those type of things, and they put out these warnings about restriction on water use, but when you have municipalities and counties who don't back up what the water management district says, in terms of trying to, if it's a water shortage or the wells are low or whatever, they ask you to not wash your car, not to water your yard, but there's really no teeth to that. There's no real enforcement to that in terms of counties and cities. So, I mean, it's just very difficult when a water management district say to sort of restrict your uses of water, but no one really follows their advice or whatever. So I'm just saying, so it becomes very difficult to make other municipalities or counties do.
Well, that's kind of where I was going to go with this. I mean, there are two dimensions to this. One is, let's make sure nobody else gets our water.
Right.
And in order to have more water for the future, we need to conserve less. How much of the discussion by these participating government entities has been, let's conserve, let's use less, let's do the kind of, because you know, you all, how little authority we really have.
Why conserve water here if they're just going to?
Somebody else is just going to take it. There are clearly two parts to the discussion. And one part we can do something about, another part we can't, except to lobby.
Conversation, the conservation is a component of this. I mean, a, a big component of it. And, you know, if Chris, if Chris would like to.
Kind of things that we're doing here in Lefeu County, for instance, but only things that we don't do.
In all candor, you know, the, with the counties that are, that are involved, are some of the more rural counties, and in which case, I don't know that they necessarily have the expertise that, that, that Lefeu County has as, as far as water issues are concerned. I think that, that, because some of them are agricultural, there is concern, obviously, that they want to make sure that they have enough water. But at the same time, they know that water costs them something when they're in, and, you know, they don't want to use any more water than they have to. And, and on Wednesday, Chris, Chris and I, Chris stayed longer than I did, went to the stakeholder meetings at, between the Swami and the St. John, which is another, which is, you know, is a, I feel pretty confident that is a direct result of flow. Because, quite honestly, flow was created because there are issues with the water management district, you know, and, and the perceived reluctance to, to, to deny applications. And so, you know, that's part of it. Another part of it is, in this legislation that there is being proposed, is that, that we, going forward, that should, to try to get all the water management districts to use the same science. Because in the JEA permit, you had, you had the St. John's Water Management District saying, it's not going to have any, any effect or minimal effect, and then you had the Swami saying, not so fast. So, so, and they were both using their own science. So, you know, the push is that they all use the same science so that, you know, when a permit comes, you won't have that instance, they're all on the same page. And there was another point that I wanted to make about, but, but flow, as, as, the other benefit is, is because of the organization of this group, you have the Swami Water Management District and the St. John's Water Management District talking to each other. And, and I don't know that that's necessarily been so much the case before, I could be wrong, there's nobody in here to correct me. And if that's not the case, I apologize profusely, but there have been instances when, when I know that there were, there were differences.
Well, I'm sure all of them are talking now, that's what the legislature did to them.
My interest is in getting involved in and supporting this group is directly related to how serious they are about getting their own conservation houses in order. But there's clearly strong emphasis on all the participating units, that the thing that we can control is using less, let's share information, let's pool our resources, let's make sure that as a group, we're doing what we can to conserve water. And then a portion of it can then be, let's collectively lobby to try to get the water management districts and the state to respect what we're doing. But if they're not willing to take that first step, I think it sucks some credibility out of the process.
I think that that's a huge component of it, Mike, at least it is for me, and, you know, I'm one representative of 117 that are up there, but.
So I was out for a few minutes, you're recommending that we just continue to watch this process and not give any money at this point?
Well, their time is obviously money. But, but Chris felt, in my, it's my belief that, that, that Chris feels that, that it doesn't put an undue burden on, on EPD to, to contribute to this conversation. Now, I sit up there on the panel, it might be a real good idea to have Chris give his impressions as well. So he's been at all the meetings.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Chris Byrd, Environment Protection Director. And Commissioner Pinkins and I have been driving up to Lake City quite a bit the last year, I guess. And I, I would agree with his, his perspective on it. Just to recap, the reason the Flow Group got together in the beginning was concern over the St. John's River Water Management District issuing a, a new consumptive use permit to the city of Jacksonville. And that seemed to be kind of a wake-up call. It happened right when we were in a drought, but it also happened when there, there has been growing evidence that Jacksonville pumping water is starting to pull water from north central Florida, and, and actually changing the watershed boundaries, because they're pumping so hard and they're not putting any water back into the aquifer. So that's really where it got started. The, the group, and there are, I think there's about 17 members, Lefeu County is the most urban county, I think Lefeu and probably Clay County, and other than that, these are relatively rural counties. Their, and their, their largest consumptive use for most of those counties, except maybe Hamilton, is agriculture. They have nowhere near the suburban footprint like we do with, with grass and such. But I, I think that they're, they're struggling, they have been struggling, although they seem, now that they've hired an executive secretary, they're starting to get a little framework. It's, it's a very technical issue, a lot of the things, even the permit with the city of Jacksonville, it's a very technical issue. And these are very rural counties that, that are kind of trying to figure out what to do. I, I agree, though, I think right now, in terms of, of Lefeu County putting money into that, we really need to wait and, and get a little more definition from them. We're going to be there anyway, it's an important issue, and I, I'm committing, and I know my staff is committing to, to attend these meetings and, and monitor what's going on. And I think, like it was mentioned earlier, the conservation part, that is something that really, if you look at what Lefeu County is doing, and, and what we've had, what we've been able to do by leveraging money from the water management districts, we think we can share that with these rural counties. They don't have a counterpart to EPD, but they have extension offices. And we, we think that there's, we kind of look at what local governments are doing with water as more on the retail level, and what the districts are doing is more on the wholesale level. We think we can help some of these other counties. It's clear that conservation's going to be a big issue. The, the big, the big thing I think that they're grappling with is, what do you do when a, a big consumptive use permit comes up? And currently, I mean, the Jacksonville permit's already been issued, the other one that's kind of looming is the one down in Marion County, the beef farm down there.
Oh, yeah.
And, but, you know, we're going to have more of these come up, and I think that the question is, are the districts using good science when they're issuing the permits? And I, I think there's still a lot of question about that. But, but again, in, in terms of this group, I think the legislation's going to be important. But, but ultimately, this, this group is trying to organize around protecting water resources in north central Florida, in some ways from what's going on on the East Coast, the pumping that's going on over there, and, you know, trying to make sure we don't have a conflict that they're pumping so hard over there and they're not putting any back in the aquifer, that they're pulling it from us. I mean, that's really the, the concern.
Mr. Chair, in reference to going back to, I guess, your first statement about Jacksonville, JEA, they are not actually putting the water back, they're just, they don't have a, like a reclaim water facility.
They don't, you know, like, right, almost a stone's throw from here, GRU has the drainage wells, which actually, I mean, there's some concern about the water quality, but at least they're putting millions of gallons a day back into the aquifer. And, you know.
Taxable's on the ocean, they just dump it out.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
They aren't doing, it's more expensive for them to force the water back in. We, we're blessed, the geology over here really makes it easier to do that, because the limestone just kind of takes it. When you're on the coast, I mean, Dubois County, St. John's, you, it's, it's either going to go out to the ocean or it's going to go up in the air. And even when they use reclaimed water for irrigation over there, none of that really makes it back in the aquifer. It's, it's either, you know, tied up in the vegetation, or it's, or it goes in the air, or it washes to the ocean. So they've got kind of this imbalance, the way, the way that works. And so I think going forward, I mean, north central Florida has an interest in trying to get those, eat those coastal counties to get some water back in the aquifer, so that, because it's got to come from somewhere, and if they're pulling it out and they're not putting it back in, then it's pretty obvious that it's coming from over here. And, and so that's, that's one of the issues.
My observation is that this flow, I mean, the question for us is, how do we participate or not in this flow business? It flows right now just a committee, it's not a water management district, so it doesn't really have any taxing authority or any ability to do regulations. It's not a waterkeeper organization, which is sort of geared up to do advocacy and to push back legally. It's not a political action committee, so it can't do what really needs to happen, which is to unelect legislators who don't care about the environment. It's not a lobbying firm, which is what's needed to maybe convince the legislature or the cabinet to appoint people to the districts who can make a difference. So it's not all of the things that we actually need, it's something else. And I think it's great that it's got all of these committees and, and that sort of thing, but to me, it's sort of like, until we get these other things, having a committee of people that sit around and worry about things they can't do anything about, really isn't all that effective. So if we were going to, if Lefeu County was going to try to make a difference in the way that water decisions are made, you'd need any or all of those other things before you need a committee of people just to sit around and talk.
Well, Mr. Committee, I mean, the only thing I would say is that what I think, one value of it is you've got 17 elected officials that are making a commitment to have a continuing conversation about water, and it's really easy, in, in what you do on a day-to-day basis, to forget about that. I mean, there's some value in that, I'm not sure exactly.
You know, conversations are a good thing, but ultimately, we have to change the culture of the water management districts, the culture of the legislature, and maybe the culture of local governments, too, to make water a higher priority in its, in, again, I, we know what waterkeeper organizations do, they sue when somebody's doing the wrong thing, and the St. John's Waterkeeper cost Jacksonville a billion dollars in increased stormwater and, and point source pollution corrections they had to make. We know what political action committees do, they work to get the right people elected or the wrong people unelected. And then we know what lobbyists do. And, you know, if this organization with their $300,000 was going to lobby hard for the right stuff, I'd say money probably well spent. But we don't know that they're going to do that yet.
And you're absolutely right, which is why I said, say, I'd take a wait and see, attitude, to see, to see what, and I'm willing to give the, you know, the six months duration or however much time, I feel that, that it's important. And I do, and I, I don't know that I totally agree with your characterization, which, that it's, it's not doing anything. I, I think that there is merit to having the 17 units of governments represented, because not only do they have that, by, by having those 17 people up there together, you have the, the power of the small counties coalition, Florida Association of Counties, as well as the League of Cities, because their conversations taking, as a result of that, taking place with all, the three of those organizations, and those are lobbying groups.
We have the Regional Planning Council, which covers virtually the exact territory and governments we're talking about. And I was up there last night, and there was some talk about water issues and so forth. And it seems to me like if there was a governmental superstructure that needed to house the thing, that might actually be the place, because they've got staff and they've got at least some buy-in from all the local governments and, you know, regular meeting, and this would be part of the deal.
Does the Central Regional Planning Council encompass the entire area we're talking about?
It's pretty darn close.
Except for Clay.
And Clay.
Yeah. But they are. Subcommittee of the Central Regional Planning Council.
Well, and Commissioners, they, they are attended, I mean, they've been, just like Lee, I think they've been at every meeting. So they are at least, the, the executive director and their staff are showing up at both the flow meeting and the north central, or north Florida water supply stakeholders.
Okay.
Well, I think there's some merit to that, I mean, the Regional Planning Council obviously has stability, they have staff, they have a structure, and they have a history with all these governments, I guess, coming to and participating. If you want some stability and some consistency, maybe starting with some cooperation between these two groups might lead to a more stable and durable.
And they're mandated by state law to come up with a strategic regional policy plan that has a natural resources element. And that, yeah.
Good for thought.
And have the organization had a conversation with Dubois County or Jacksonville?
Uh, there was discussed, they were invited. Dubois County was invited to participate.
And they didn't?
And they didn't.
Well, is there also, is JEA the big villain here, or are they also looking at Tallahassee coming to the other side?
Um, Tallahassee as far as, how soon?
Same issue.
About water?
Water.
I think that they recognize that Tallahassee has a potential of offering solutions if, you know.
Not Tallahassee, I don't mean state government, I mean, I mean, the city.
I think hydrologically, Jacksonville's more, they, I mean, just the way the water flows, Tallahassee may be creating problems west of them, but it's, they're, they're not having the influence of Jacksonville, at least on our, not yet.
Well, and then you need to throw in Gainesville as well.
Sure, absolutely.
Because Gainesville has, Gainesville has an impact, and, and.
Jacksonville just happens to be growing faster at this point, so.
Well, it's good, too, but get your finger.
Yeah. Okay.
So anyway, you know, y'all give me your rate, if you don't want, if y'all don't want, if you don't want to participate, if you don't think that the.
No, I'm happy with your suggestion. Anybody have a problem with that?
Yeah, my other question would be, if, if we and I both go to that meeting, does that problem, Mr., can you both participate, Mr. Chairman, is that a problem?
There's some, they follow sunshine rules.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be, it's, it's a, a meeting of the, of the county commission, so I, I've never been to the meeting.
I mean, do, do we need to start noticing the meeting so more than one of us can show up?
That's the safest course of, of action with the sunshine law. And so, but the problem is, the meeting's in Lake City, and, you know, we can't have a meeting outside of jurisdiction. So if you, if you, if one of you show up.
That's no different from the Regional Planning Council. We're four of us.
No, that, that rule applies to counties and cities. For example, the city of Gainesville can't have a meeting outside the jurisdictional limits of the cities. Okay? You know, all the rules that are, make things hard to do. You know, all the rules that are, make things hard to do apply to the cities and the counties. And-
I guess what I was suggesting is, we just need to notice the meeting, because I'm interested in participating, but we can't have a situation where one of us, only one of us is allowed to talk, or something like that.
Whatever we need to do, because I don't want to get in the doghouse.
Well, we haven't procured the duct tape I need to.
Let me run up.
That's a pleasure discussion, I guess.
Why don't you all, if you're both going up there, let me, Chris, let me, you and I talk about how this little gathering gets together, it's called an authority now.
It's a big auditorium, it's the school board. I mean, we can sit them on both ends or something.
Can't pass notes.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yes.
We'll figure that out.
Yeah.
Okay, transportation funding. Who wants to kick this discussion off?
Well, I'll start.
Thanks, Chris.
There's clearly a number of groups that want to see something brought forward in 2014 to fund transportation. I think one of the groups is the county commission. There's this other group called Open Elachua, which is a very loose group of folks who gets together and talks about it. The Chamber just had a policy paper they put out with the group that they're talking about. They've got a nice report that about 90-plus percent of it, we would all agree with, I think. They're interested in doing something. And so I think it's the question that we need to answer, maybe not today, but pretty darn soon, is, do we, as a commission, want to try to drive the process, or do we want to leave it up to these outside groups? And my hope is that if we decide to leave it up to the outside groups, that we all would agree that we're going to help move the agenda forward in 2014. You know, relatively early in the process, we need to give them our blessing, or participate, or whatever we're going to do, so that we have some success in 2014. So that's what I know. I've been, I know that the Open Elachua group and the Chamber group, they were going to meet yesterday, but they couldn't get their schedules together. So they're going to have a joint meeting early and start talking about how to do things and whether it's done. And those groups have not made any commitment whether to do it as a citizens' initiative with signatures, or whether they're going to be putting something together to bring to us. But whatever guidance we can give them, I'm sure they would appreciate it.
Well, I think our county's involvement should be inversely related to how active citizen groups are. I do think we need a question in 2014. If it looks like a citizens' group is running with it, making progress on a citizen petition drive, I'm quite happy to let that happen and we stay out of it. If it doesn't look like that's happening, or if they're faltering, then I think we need to step up our, I think we need to keep putting this question on the ballot every two years. And when the citizen believe that, okay, we accept that this is a serious problem, that it's eventually going to pass it, a couple of things, I think, need to be a part of whatever gets put on the ballot. And I hope that any citizen group out there working on this respects these points. I think it's absolutely critical that each of the municipalities be allowed to set its own work program with their share of the money. And secondly, I think the county's share should be dedicated to maintenance only. And then lastly, and this is not fundamental, but it's just my view, and it's, I think we should go ahead and make a penny, rather than three-quarters of a penny. I don't think there's going to be a significant drop-off in support on the part of the public for that. Again, it needs to grow by another two-years' worth of deficit on part of the county.
Well, you were there, Mike, you know why it was three-quarters or so. I mean, it was originally going to be a penny anyway, so, you know, I think it needs to be a penny. And the part that I had a problem with will be solved because they'll finish the plan, you know, finish the study that was going to be done. So, I mean, people will have knowledge of what it means, so that issue will go away. I think that the critical, and as far, I think, part of the problem, just based on history, is we just, you know, we didn't have enough time. As what always happens, it seems like, you know, we got butted up against the deadline. You know, so we didn't have, we didn't have the time to, when there was a sticky point, we didn't have time to hatch it out. It got too close to it. So if it doesn't look like there's one, I think Coach is right, that we need to see what's going to happen. But if it doesn't look like a citizens' group is going to do something pretty darn quick, I mean, like in the next three or four months, they come and talk to us, then we need to start doing it. Because we need to have, it would be great to have everything worked out, you know, a year before something goes out. And so that way, we're all on the same page, you know, all the issues have been fleshed out. And I think that that would probably guarantee our best chance of success. And maybe a year's too much, but enough time to where, you know, where everything's been decided. And I think that that would guarantee our best chance of being successful.
Well, it would be an early role for the county, at least in facilitating a meeting where everyone who wants to be a part of this process can come together and at least have an initial discussion. We might find that there's less disagreement than we're all.
Well, I think the other thing that we learned is that we need solid support from the city commission, solid support from the county commission, solid support from all the small-town commissions, and the referenda that have passed in the past, including at this last election, when everybody was on board with the school board stuff. It's clear that this community can pass a tax when everybody's singing off the same song sheet. So what we need to do is hopefully get there amongst ourselves and with our brethren, with the municipalities, so that there's no discord coming from us about what's going on, so. And then the only question is, do we put it on the ballot, or do we let the citizens do it? There's advantages either way. It's a lot of work to get, I think it's 11,000 or 12,000 signatures, but it's not that much work.
It's productive work, too.
And it's positive work that there's people willing to step up and do it as early as, like, January. It's a six-month period that you can get the signatures in. I know when we were doing Elachua County Forever in 2000, it took 8,600 signatures, and we got them in 90 days. And that helped ensure that things were going to pass, so. In my opinion, I think a citizens' initiative is good, but I also think that we all need to be totally positive about it moving forward. Each of us have different groups of folks that we can influence. And I think it's each of our job to find one-fifth of the electorate that's going to vote for it within our various groups.
Airboat Kirk, you got 13.5. Four months, it could definitely be done, but now that was a pretty clear issue. Transportation is going to be a little trickier, it's going to involve more conversation, more getting people to understand what they're voting for. Dave, you want to add something?
I just wanted to make sure that if there is an initiative ordinance, when the ordinance gets the petitions, it comes to the Board of County Commissioners, and the board has two choices. Adopt the ordinance, which would be, and would be consistent with what you all saying here. Having the initiative process build support for the referendum question, having the county commission adopt the ordinance eliminates the other course of action, which is, we have, we have no choice but to do a resolution, to put it on the ballot. That doesn't really imply that we support it, we're doing it because the charter has, says we have to do it. So, and it's also cleaner from a legal standpoint, if at that point in time, we adopt the ordinance when it comes in for the hearing caused by the initiative process. That's how we did the Elachua County Forever program, it was an initiative ordinance, and then the Board of County Commissioners adopted the ordinance.
From a strictly political standpoint, it's a 2014 election, it's an off-year election, it's not as positive a time to run one of these things. It's easier to do it in the presidential election years. So we have a slightly more difficult process, but what we need to do is make sure that when this thing comes to us, that we're all completely positive about it, and so.
There's also a ticking clock here, and then every year we wait, the ultimate bill gets bigger.
Right.
And so.
Well, the way we characterize these things, it's going to, when it comes to us, in whatever form, whether it's initiative or for us to vote, it's going to kind of be like a Thanksgiving dinner. There's going to be stuff on there you really like and stuff that you don't. And we're all going to have to, you know, fill our plates and move forward, and that's just the way it's going to be.
So are we thinking about maybe a county-sponsored transportation summit to kind of kick this process off, make sure everyone who wants to talk gets to talk?
Sooner than later.
And if so, like, first quarter of next year, first half of next year?
January.
January?
Yeah, seriously, in January.
We're going to have to cook it.
Yeah.
No, I think February, we need time.
Okay, well, if we're confident that we can get the word out, and everyone who wants to be a part of this discussion gets in on the ground floor, then yes, it's better. Y'all read the Chamber's kind of draft, transportation thing, because the sooner we start talking about that in relation to everything else, the better. Because there are clearly some things that need to be worked out there.
Yeah, I mean, they've got some things that they didn't, they wrote a lot of that in September and before, so they didn't know the results of the election. And I don't know whether it was intended to, I don't really know what the purpose of the timing of it was, but nevertheless, they, we're going to be talking to them quite a bit about how to make their report part of the solution.
Needs to be. Okay.
Would you want to do, are we going to do that? Do you want to do that on a, like, an off-Tuesday evening?
Whatever works for people. I guess, at this point.
I would move that we, that the county commission stat, direct staff, to organize a summit meeting, and that we will all help in figuring out who needs to get invitations to it. Obviously be city commissioners from all the towns. It'll be organizations like the Chamber and the builders and the realtors, who've been very involved in transportation decisions. It'll be, you know, transit groups, and then transportation activists. So.
I'll say.
Yeah.
Further discussion?
Time frame, January, February?
January, February.
Steve, can you go later than February?
Early is feasible.
Okay.
Further discussion? If the public want to comment on that motion, please come to the microphone right there, introduce yourself, tell us what you think.
My name is Parker Van Hard, I'm the vice chair of the Economic Development Advisory Committee for Elachua County. Parker Van Hard, from EDAC.
Okay, good.
We discussed this at length and presentation by the roads department. Our committee decided not to back that initiative, because we found it to be too confusing. The issue with Gainesville wanting to do different things with the money than the rest of the counties. I think going forward, and I can't speak directly for the rest of my committee, but I believe going forward, that we should look at this as a roads issue instead of a transportation issue. Kiss, keep it simple, stupid. You know, keep the focus on repairing and building roads that we need to. And then if we want to do a different initiative for public transport, things like that, then we need to think about that. But keep those two issues separate. And I think from a PR and marketing standpoint, it's going to be a lot easier to get through an election.
Of course, that's what we just did, and it got shelled.
There was a lot of confusion around that, though, that everything was changed at the last minute. The perception, I believe, in the public was that no one knew where the money was going to go, and I'm not voting for it unless I know what's going to happen. That's just the perception. Yeah.
Well, I think the one thing we need to do, not the commission, but these groups, they need to do some careful polling to figure out what is really going to work and what's not, both in terms of content of the ballot measure, but also the messaging. Because the reason it failed was that the city of Gainesville actively worked against it, because they didn't get what they wanted. And they will actively work against this next one if they don't get what they want. And so what you're suggesting is that the city of Gainesville not get what they want.
I think if we approach it from the beginning, as this is a roads, a roads funding situation, instead of, you know, let's talk about whether it's transport roads. I think if we approach it directly from, instead of from the outset, this is about repairing and maintaining roads, I think that's, I think-
But here's the problem with the city of, I'll speak for the, I'll speak for the city of Gainesville, and that is, the city of Gainesville can't responsibly spend the amount of money that would be their fair share on road maintenance. They don't have the road maintenance issue that the county does. And so we could, the county could, the city could be paving roads that don't need to be paved to spend their money, but that makes no sense.
I think we can go broader than this, and that is, we ought to respect home rule authority to the extent that we can. And if we know the city's entitled, the cities are entitled to a share, to think they fairly are, it's not the county's decision to decide how the municipalities want to spend their money. That's where we went wrong. I don't even want to get into the, personally don't want to get into the debate I can sense that we're about to have. For me, it stops at, the city commission will decide what the residents of the city of Gainesville want to do with their share of the transportation money. For me, I agree with you, as far as the county's focus, our problem is maintenance of existing roadways that are overwhelmingly rural. That's our big problem. The city has different problems, we ought to respect that, that's my view.
And small municipalities, too.
Yeah, they have their own issues, and that's the way you get harmony right off the bat. And I think it's the most responsive to the people, because we have to assume the municipalities elect people who represent their ears, it's got the best chance of succeeding politically.
And I support the motion. I know it won't be recorded and vote, but for the rest, for the other two items that are going to be up, just to put my two cents in. Just two things that are hastily crafted, so the wording may not be perfect, but the idea is there. And as far as priorities, anything we do to get the fairgrounds moved, as soon as possible, that would be something I think is important.
Okay, did you say that you submitted some proposal visions to the governor?
Yeah, it's this page right here.
Oh, that last one, is it?
The nice 14.5 for the people that are visually impaired.
That was mine, that is, that's mine.
Oh, that's yours, okay.
We'll have Commissioner Finkerson's up on the screen, we've transcribed it into a readable font.
Okay.
And that wasn't the correct finger.
I've seen it.
Thank you.
All right, see you then. Okay, we still have a motion on the floor, then, we're discussing transportation. Did anyone else in the public want to come? Thank you for your input, appreciate it. Anybody else want to?
I also wanted to chime in as well. Thank you so much for those thoughts, because that is exactly what, a lot of the different things happen. But I think one of the underlying fundamental issues here, and I think I beg to differ in that the city doesn't have enough projects. I thought they sent like 33 pages worth of roads that needed to be repaired, to be driven through the city, then those are quite a few roads that still need to be repaired as well. So I do differ that they don't have enough projects to go ahead and take, for their funds and their fair share to be applied towards. So, that being said, right there, I think one of the key things is to try and keep it as clean and as clear and simple as possible. And at this point, then we may have enough information to understand whether the transit program that the city has, that proposes and that they put together, and maybe it's true, maybe they go ahead and put their proposal in, because they are a big chunk of it, it's so different from the pavement management only, that they go ahead and set their own ballot issues, go ahead and separate the two, to have, or at least incorporate their bigger projects. Because I don't think the majority of people would be uninclined to go ahead and make sure that the rapid, the RTS is funded well enough, at least to take care of the bigger needs. And I think that that was noted, that the possibility that the east side of the county, or at least in the Gainesville area, needed a few more, it needed more headway, needed more frequency, needed more of those things. I think that we could go beyond, and that we could go ahead and kind of address the overall underlying basic principles and elements of transportation. And that would be for road maintenance, which is clearly the number one. And then the second one would be in a very effective, cost-efficient, because we already have an award-winning RTS program. And, but I think it just needs to be tweaked enough to go ahead and make sure that we do cover a bit more of what, I think some of the folks had mentioned before, that were needed there. But then from, separate from that, is this kind of a supersized steroids program with the RTS and the circulator, and all of those huge ticket items, it's something that, you know, a county like Elachua, that's a good portion of it is rural, and the part that is in the high-density and the high-populated areas is very well-served, it could be possibly better served under certain circumstances, and maybe even some park rides, and really kind of put together something that's just a well-designed package. And then for the ultimate programs of the bus rapid transit, the circulator, the street cars, and all of those other things, kind of on a separate little piece there. all of those other things, kind of on a separate little piece there, and say, now, do we really want to go ahead and fund all of this, and say, here's your second part of it, in the second part of the, or a separate ballot question, so that we could go ahead and make sure that we have the priorities and have the needs, and the biggest need in there, I think, is the roads for the entire county and a lot of the city roads as well, and I think that we can all agree on that, but there was just a lot of politicking involved in this last one, with such a simple solution to the biggest problem that we have in the county, and I think that that should be one of the bigger priorities, that we do have to make sure that we do get that right, that we go ahead and put the right ballot questions on there, because it's true, the more time goes by, the more expensive our biggest deficit ends up getting progressively, as roads get exponentially more expensive, as they get neglected, so, thank you.
Just say, I'm going to make an early prediction, if this turns into an ideological clash between roads versus transit, it's going down again.
Yeah.
And I hope we don't go that way.
Totally agree.
I hope we don't go that way. Anyone else from the public?
I'm sorry, just, just real, just real quick, I think our summit will help that a lot, you know, at least it'll get all the things, and if we really promote that in a forum, that we can try and get as much of this in the baseline as quickly as possible, so we can figure out what is going to be the best way to deal with all this. Thank you.
I think it would probably be helpful, too, if, if someone actually knows the history of the RTS, in terms of how the city of Gainesville wound up with the transit system and the responsibility, what role did the county have in that? I kind of remember it vaguely, I don't know if you remember Warren, I remember discussing it, well, what, ten years ago, maybe, but, but it'd be helpful for me, as a county commissioner, and the citizens of Latchua County, to know what transpired from the inception of the RTS system, to how the city of Gainesville wound up with the transit system.
And Mr. Chair, along those lines, in addition to the history, we have the future history that's already planned.
Right.
And, and that was one of the issues that came, that came out during the discussions, the perception that there were unfinished plans, if you will, and I think that's an important issue in terms of the principles of what we're trying to do for transportation throughout the, throughout the county, so, I, I do agree also, also, that to have the people there who have the information on how these pieces fit together, and then make a decision based on all of that information. One of, one of the things that happens with the way we as a community make decisions, and we saw evidence of it almost every meeting that we have, and certainly almost every meeting the city commission has, some of these major initiatives take so long, that those of us who are involved in the day-to-day wranglings of it take for granted that everybody knows the trials and tribulations we've been through, and what brought us to this point. That's not true. Half of us forget, and the other half weren't here when, when all that took place. So there has to be a history lesson, almost every time we start an initiative like this, and I think that's a good point, so that, whether it's how did we get to the roads situation, how did we get to the transit situation, what are our plans in place to integrate those two issues into a, a well-functioning transportation system? We're never going to have enough money to do everything we want.
And I have one more of the comments.
I'm sure I think that's an important point.
If I could.
Having the people there who can provide the past history as well as the future history.
And I, I think that, you know, it's a responsibility also of the county in terms of having funding to also help in the future, because I think that, what, is seven years, maybe, the sales tax could be used for?
Twenty.
Twenty years? Or whatever, so after those twenty years, what does the county do at that point? So the county should begin to also, begin to plan for, after those twenty years, and I'm just saying, I'm suggesting that, that there be a fund set aside, if we have this tax, for the county's responsibility also is to be putting money into a road fund for the future after those twenty years. I, I'm just saying, I think that that's prudent to start planning for the future, those type of long-range planning, so that we don't ever get in the position we're in again, and, and sometimes that comes from not making that a priority in the county's budget. I mean, and, and that's the same way with cities, same thing, we need to start looking for the future and how to start setting money aside for, for things like that, or, or projects, and that's why I asked that Tuesday about capital projects, that kind of stuff, so we begin to start looking down the road, and stop dealing with what we need to do today to get by, and I, I just think that just planning for it properly will occur over time, and I think that that's important, and those are my comments.
Just real quickly, to the point.
Hutch was next.
I just wanted to, to his point, just to his point.
Sure, it's all the point, but Hutch, do you want to?
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Commissioner Chestnut, it's, it's wonderful that you're thinking that way, but we are so far behind, that we need almost the full cent just to even get back to even, let alone reserves, and that would be for the twenty years. I mean, that's how bad the roads are, and, and I'm going to suggest and recommend that our Dave Sirlandi do that nice dog and pony show that they do have, and with a lot of time and effort, so we can see how extensive the road problem is, and I commend you for that, but we almost have to have two pennies, one penny for the reserves and one penny for actually trying to address all the backlog that we have in our, in our county, in our county roads and, the city roads and municipalities, I mean, just, it's a big problem, so I commend you for that, but it is so big that we'll be lucky if we can get through that.
Well, I, I don't think you're understanding what I'm saying. If the one cent sales tax passed, those are the fundings we would probably use to, to address that issue, but what I'm saying is, during our county commission budget, we should all be, because after those twenty years, the county will have to resurface roads again, and so all, what I'm saying is that, while we have that penny sales tax, the county should start putting money aside for the future, to, in terms of the maintenance and maintaining that, because once that one cent goes, that's it.
Well, you're right, and, and county staff actually did, that is the approach they're taking, and what they proposed to us for the sales tax would be a way to catch up and then bring us to a point where we have, know how much we need to put into it annually to maintain going forward, and that is their goal, three-quarters percent really wasn't quite enough to get us all the way there, but it was going to take us a long way, but that is the correct approach, and I think that's the, you and our staff are on the same page there.
What I wanted to say is, the way we fund roads in the United States is, we have lots of ways to get the money to build them, but very few ways to maintain them, and in some other places, I know in Europe, and I think in Australia, when they build a road, they create a sinking fund in their tax structure that takes care of the maintenance of that road forever. The problem is, that makes a much more expensive initial project. I have no problem if every time we build a new road, we, we also budget the sinking fund necessary for every fifteen or twenty years repaving it.
I agree with that, too, and we've had that discussion several times in the last five years, and Lee and I have our big bang up about whether our growth pays for itself, so I'm sure you'll get to hear some of it, rather than later, and one of the points is that it's much easier to build things than to take care of them, and that has been the attitude, not just of Latchua County, but the state, and if we did what you just said.
We'd never build another road. We wouldn't have built many of the roads we already built, because.
That's right, because you take into account the real, long-term costs.
Well, responsible, responsibly funding future maintenance is the biggest growth management tool we have, so, I'm, I'm happy to do that. The other, the other thing I wanted to mention was, in the last thirty-something years, we've had six, as far as I can count, six tax referendums that have passed. We've had four road tax referendums that have failed, and each one of the road tax referendums failed for very specific and sort of knowable reasons, and in each case, it wasn't because people didn't think roads were important, but because somebody flubbed the politics, and we saw that in this last one, as well as all the other ones, so, the six tax referendums that did pass, people got the politics right, they knew how to get the community all pulling together, they knew how to deal with the opposition's concerns, so that the opposition didn't get real organized, and they had very strong political action committees with a very broad range of people in the community, so we know what, I mean, we've got the record here, thirty-year record of how to pass stuff and how to not pass stuff, and so, when I saw that this last referendum was doing everything they could to not pass it, it didn't pass, and nobody was surprised, so, let's, let's do this one right, if we're going to do it, because it's a huge waste of everybody's time to put something on the ballot, knowing it's going to fail, because we've, we've got the lessons of the past. So in terms of rehashing history, that's the history I, I want to rehash.
Okay, let's go back to the public, we were asking the public to comment on the motion, it's now on the floor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here on the county side for a change. Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak to this, it's something very near and dear to my heart.
Who are you?
Oh.
You know it real.
I'm a has-been. My name's Warren Nielsen. The, let me just be as blunt as I can about this, all this talk is meaningless, unless we grow up as a community, and address the fact that what we have, community-wide, is a multiple number of needs. Now, I guarantee you something, I'm going to make a political prediction, I'm pretty good at this, not perfect, but pretty good, if we go forward with an idea that we have some sort of separation of our problems and our needs by having a referendum that just addresses road maintenance, county-wide, and then we separate that into another component of a referendum, a separate referendum, if you will, that deals with the needs of the cities, be they transit or pedestrian needs, whatever, the multiple, multiple, multimodal dimension that cities require, I guarantee you, neither will pass. We need each other to pass this. Hutch just brought it up, he stole a little bit of my thunder, we don't pass transportation referendums in this community, we don't have a record of doing it. The only way we're going to get this done is if we get into a Gumbayaw mode, seriously, and we cannot start picking it apart, we're going to have to recognize that we need to maintain our roads, county-wide, but that's largely a road mile issue in the unincorporated areas. The city folks say, look, we have a different complexity of needs in our transportation, simply because we're a city. We have this urban dynamic that's developing, this nurturing innovation economy, the university's involved with it, which is another player that needs to be talked, brought into your summit, that wasn't mentioned, Xanadu also. All that has to be understood and respected. We have to walk out into the community and say, this is for the greater good of the whole community, not just my part of the community, because I love roads exclusively, I don't have much of an interest in what goes on in the city, which you should, because the city basically is a large, largely the economic engine of our, of our community. We've got to do this together, if we don't, I guarantee you, it's going to, I wouldn't even bother with it, if, if it becomes separated, maintenance versus multimodal stuff that the city needs, who they have been working hard to figure out what their needs are, allow them the respect for the expertise that they put in, with them among themselves and the university, about how to do all this. We don't do it, we're wasting our breath. We've all got to sing the same tune. The Thanksgiving dinner, you know, I don't care much for cranberries, I don't eat them, but they're on our table at Thanksgiving. Other people don't care for the Brussels sprouts, okay, I like them. We've got to understand, it's not all our game, and we start, and you guys started doing a little bit of this, starting, picking it apart, it's got to be seen holistically, the whole package, if we don't see it that way, if we don't lock arms and make, and move forward, it's not going to happen. The past is prolonged, it won't happen. We, this particular referendum went down, what was it, sixty-six, sixty-seven percent? And nobody was out there actively rambling against it, we've got to convince the community, everybody, that we've got to do this for the betterment of the future of Latchua County, and we can't start dividing ourselves up right away. It's not a matter of trying to be sweetness and light, as a matter of fact, it ain't going to happen, unless we do it together. Period. Thank you for letting me finish on that.
All right, appreciate your comments. Does anyone else like to speak? And the motion on the floor is to convene a summit, to all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. Best of luck to all of us. All right, we're moving right along, that just leaves, oh no, we're not moving right along, we're getting ready to start talking about guiding principles, aren't we?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm like, move, move on.
Okay, well.
I move the, I move the, I move the Hutchinson version of the guiding principles.
Motion dials for like a second. My version, I'll just, I, I got it in first, so I'll quickly say.
Can I see your version?
It's, it should be right there, but I sent it out sort of about five o'clock yesterday, and.
My version was aimed to be exclusive.
I was going to say, I thought it was your version.
Mine says Byerly at the top.
And mine says Hutch.
Mine is really.
Right.
That's.
I've got all of these versions on the computer, so.
Well, that one, is that the?
That should say Byerly at the top.
Was that the original?
Right, which one's, that's right, I'm probably going to leave that.
Well, I took yours and improved, so there.
It's fine, because my, I, I wasn't trying to inject any politics into it at all, I just took a pass at it from a readability perspective, I don't think I changed any policies, if anyone sees something they think changes in terms of policy, then please say so, I'll happily put it back, but I've watched this thing grow and morph over the last twelve years, and I understand the dynamics, each commission comes in, and they don't want to pull anything out, they just want to add things because it's easier, and it gets bigger and bigger, and each point is sometimes addressed in other points, so I just tried to pull all the ideas together into their own paragraph, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and pare out a lot of the verbiage, and, and that's a good starting point, and then Hutch, as he said, took another pass at de-editing, we need to keep doing that, pare it down, the less is more, and he also added a few other points, so, that's where the discussion begins, and then Commissioner Baird, this, this is you.
That's me.
This is you.
That's my name.
And we can go from point by point and discuss it that way, but I think we probably need to wait until Chuck comes back into the room, but go ahead, Mr. Man.
Mr. Chair, I guess the, the question for us, so we can follow, we can all follow along, is which version are we starting with as the base? We've got available in a Word document that we can put up on the screen, original version that's, that's in, that has been approved previously.
Well, part of the problem with that is, is that it's incredibly difficult to read, and it's spread out into multiple points.
We've got, we've got all three versions, the original version, the Byerly version, the Hutch version, and I guess the question is, which one do you want to start with as your starting point for the wordsmithing that we'll go, that we'll be sure to go on, because we have Commissioner Baird, who's added some, provided some additional language that may or may not fit into any of the points that are currently on there, maybe replacement points, Commissioner Pinkerson identified two, that, one of which is, is very similar to the, and we can put that up on the board, very similar to the, for example, the economic development approach that Commissioner Baird has, so the question is, which one do we start with?
Right.
It's one of the three, it's either the.
And that's why I said that.
The board one, the Byerly one, or the Hutch one, and use that as the starting point to change words, add things, delete things, and.
If everyone accepts that what I put out there is policy neutral, didn't really change any of the policies, but just basically improved and clarified the language, and I would propose that we start with that, I really, I didn't try to change any policies, I just pulled all the individual sentences together into the same paragraph, and they were about the same issue, and got rid of a lot of the language, and if we're going to start changing things, I think we ought to start from that point. Does anybody have a problem with the content of my first draft?
Well.
Did I change anything in someone's mind?
Well, my overall initial thought in terms of, I don't want to make it sound bad, but it's going to sound really bad, but it's like rearranging the chairs in the Titanic, I mean, it's, it's, it's changing things, what I thought. What I thought, what I thought we should first try and do before we go ahead and do what I consider a little bit more of a to-do list, is to determine, do we have a set of priorities, and look at those first, and then say, based on the set of priorities, where do all of these 14 items fall into? Because at least from what I'm gathering, if you look at what we should be doing today, it's December 14th, and what we're, I think, trying to determine here is the guiding principles and kind of the foundation of what we're going to be making some very big decisions in 2013. And based on that overall guideline, should then determine what we are focusing on, what takes most of our time in the whole next year. Because unfortunately, a lot of times, the details get in the way of the bigger picture, and you end up spending a lot of time doing these because they're very task-oriented, and they're very simple to do. Like, I know I have to do laundry at home, I know I have to wash the dishes and all that, but if I don't do some other things in my household that aren't, as in the book Seven Habits of Highly Effective People states about the important versus the urgent and all of that, then we can go ahead and decide, you know, how we're going to address all of these things. And what I just kept thinking in terms of priority for our county, at least for right now, taking a look at what are big issues, and that's economic development. And I think it's not just the county, it's the country as well. But in our county, the majority of folks, if you ask what would be the number-one issue that should be addressed in terms of setting a good foundation, setting a good fertile ground for the county, and it would be economic things that encompasses all of us, you know, in all ranges of the spectrum here. And so, that would be, and then, of course, we did touch on the roads as well, and I'm glad that we have, but you know, where does that fall in? And I know there's only so much we can do, but at the same time, as Commissioner Cheston said, we've got a problem right now. We need to start addressing some of those issues right now, and how are we going to address that? And then, of course, let me see here, and then there are some things that may not be an issue right now, because we've done, we've served so well, such as public safety. So, if we look at all of that and we decide among ourselves, what are the top priorities in order of priority, and then from there, go ahead and try and determine some different strategies to go ahead and do that, then we get. But I think right now, for this particular, at least under my, what I would think would be the best way to try and prioritize would be to do that. But that's just my thought, gentlemen.
Maybe we ought to first agree on what this document is supposed to be. And this is the 13th time I've had this conversation, and I really hope we don't spend a whole lot of time and multiple meetings working on this document. In my view, your vision emerges from your actions, and it's more important to focus our effort and our energy on our comprehensive plan, and the Little Communities Reinvestment Plan, and our actual policy documents, and our land development code. That's our real statement of priority and vision. This document has never been a prioritization. You're suggesting something different. It's not prioritized now, and never has been. We've talked about that in the past, about whether or not we want to take each of these different issues and prioritize them, and we realize, well, that's our work program, that's how that kind of evolves. This is really just one succinct paragraph about each of the major issues we deal with, and what hopefully the consensus of the commission is on that issue, and then we move on. The only reason I couldn't interview this at all is because it was so clearly a product of group writing. Committees do not write well, and it was embarrassing to me to read it, and to think of someone from outside of our community stumbling across it on our website and reading this as our guiding vision for the county commission, and it was just, it was almost incomprehensible, and acronyms, and inconsistent language. So, I just wanted to pull all of that out, make it a readable document. We can spend weeks debating and taking majority votes about what goes into the vision and what comes out, or we can just kind of keep it broad, keep it as a consensus, and spend a whole lot of time on it, just to make sure it's readable. Those are my thoughts. I really, if we get into a discussion about which is the higher priority, Commissioner Baird, then we're just going to block down. We're not going to have consensus on that. That's going to be a vote, and we can take a lot of time doing it, or we can just recognize that priorities want to emerge in the work program that we set for ourselves for the coming year, and this document is not a work program.
Mr. Chair, I'd start with number one.
And just go through them?
Yeah.
And do what?
And let's wordsmith number one, and then when we're done with that, let's wordsmith number two.
Do we really want to wordsmith, or do we want to highlight what we want in it, and then let one person write it?
Well, that's what I did with all of these, and I'll suggest that the difference between the number one that you wrote, which is about discouraging sprawl in rural areas and encouraging higher density infill, what I changed was to say that we want an overall development pattern that provides for every kind of lifestyle, high-density urban, medium-density suburban, low-density rural. I think that's the reality, I think that's what we do, I think it's good for the community. Second line is about what we're doing is, if we do it right, we will encourage more opportunities to work, play, and shop within close proximity to residential areas, again. And then I list those plans that are in this thing about the MTPO plans, and Plan East Gainesville, and so forth.
I'm ready to approve your version right now. And my only effort, I was trying to avoid changing.
Well, I'm changing it because I think this is a better expression.
And that's fine.
So, I'll move my version of number one.
Is there a second?
I think I'll second it.
Okay.
You can't second it? Are you chairing still?
Yeah, I'm chairing the meeting, so.
What was the motion?
I'm like, I thought you took yourself off that.
I wouldn't ask for the purposes of us having, hopefully, a roundtable discussion, but when it's time to vote, and I got to do these things.
What was the motion?
The motion, does Hutch move his version of number one?
Okay.
We're going to go through them point by point.
Let's move it on then.
Okay. If we, now if we do this, then of course, we're going to have to take public comment on 14, 15, 16.
No, take it on the whole thing.
That's not our policy. Every time we take a vote, we encourage public comment, so you might want to modify your motion, which is.
Okay, let's move to number two then.
Okay.
Number two.
Just, I want to make sure we're doing what you all want us to do. We've got the Hutch document, right now, we've got the Byerly document open as kind of the template that we're working from.
Yeah.
Do you want us to try to keep up with you here?
Yeah.
For example, Fay just took Hutch's item number one and put it into.
I'm just going to explain the difference.
Why don't you just move your document?
I moved my document, which is what I did earlier. And then we'll go through it, and I'll explain what I did.
Okay. Is there a second?
Open up the Hutch document.
Is there a second to the motion to accept Hutch's version of this as the new guiding vision for Alachua County Commission?
Just for discussion.
I'll second it for discussion.
All right, we're going to discuss, and we have a motion on the floor.
All right, thank you.
We've got that document.
All right, number two, the difference there is, what we say is, the county will work with government agencies and so forth to promote homeownership and provide affordable workforce housing. What I changed that to say is, I think we should be working with public and private partners to provide housing that is appropriate and affordable for both homeowners and renters. And the reason I changed that is that I think through this last housing crisis, there's become the recognition that renting is a good thing for some people, and we are here saying we're promoting homeownership, and I think the over-promotion of homeownership may have gotten some people in trouble. The other thing is that I use the word appropriate and affordable because we don't even mention that we do affordable workforce. I think that's what we're really going for, is the appropriate type and location of housing for people at all stages in their life, because I know there's been times when I've rented, and there'll be times in the future when I rent, and I think we should be encouraging the right mix of rental versus homeownership. So, that's my change.
Well, that is a policy departure. And I think that the version that we've historically used, I'm referring to the Byerly document, but there's nothing in here that didn't change, because I created it over time, and that is, hits both of those points, to provide homeownership, which I remember was, I remember those points, it's very important for Commissioner Long, I think he's the one who asked if that specific phrase could be put in there. And provide affordable workforce housing kind of gets pushed to what you're getting at, it doesn't specify ownership, it just means that, at least at the point where people may not have an option whether to rent or to own, but would like to own, that we're trying to get them to the point where they can. I'm okay either way, I don't think there's a major distinction, and I don't think this is going to affect the policies that we adopt as a county commission, but it's a subtle but important distinction. Go ahead.
And, Commissioner Hutchinson, I think that that rental portion is a big piece of it, there are, and that really has created a big problem. It's one thing to say you can afford to buy the house, especially with this huge payment assistance, and you make it almost, you know, free, but maintaining a house is extremely expensive as well. And so, you get, you put all of that, and you make it sound like it's so wonderful, yet it ends up being a big burden, and then you end up creating a bigger problem than what you actually tried to solve. So, I think that broadening that is a good thing, but right into that whole thing is what makes it so much more affordable, is having a good job. I mean, that's one of the key things that keeps.
Yeah, but we're going to deal with jobs down here.
Well, the thing is that there, and I understand, that's why I keep saying, the job piece of it cures all of the rest of the other things, and that's why I would love to try and move it back up when we do get to that point, because right here, what I see is that when you were talking about the mortgage modifications, I'm like, you could modify it, and you could put, you know, the actual interest rate at zero, but if somebody doesn't have a job, they cannot pay for that mortgage, no matter how cheap it is, unless it's zero. So, the big piece, the biggest element of the whole thing and the driving force, is to have that job, and that good job, and that's where my economic development vision there, I like that one, and we need to, and once we get to that, we'll see where it might fit into this whole thing. But I want to at least lay the foundation down that that is a very good objective, and I do like that idea, because here in the commercial, when we had the possibility of the value of the commercial property to be able to go up, well, when the rentals then end up going up in tax as much higher than the homeowners, well, guess who ends up paying that additional tax, incremental tax payment? It's the renters. So, it just makes it harder, or else you don't have as many nice rentals available for those people to choose from. So, overall, you're hurting that emphasis, so I do like that aspect of it, and thank you for that suggestion. But as part of that whole thing is superseding all of that is economics development, and this is going to kind of be an offshoot of that, once we do get that portion in there high up in this list, and in terms of focus of the decisions that we make, to make sure that we end up solving some of the other issues that we do have, based on the lack of income.
Can I interject here, just as chair? I think we can get really off-focus here easily, too. I think we need to make two decisions. One, is this going to be a priority document? And two, is it going to proceed through consensus? Are we going to take a vote on each one, majority rules? We need to make those decisions, and they will know how to proceed. So, it's.
I'm interested in wordsmithing a document and avoiding a whole lot of my, injecting my philosophy, it's all in the words, and we need to move this thing through. I don't think this thing is something we want to spend hours, and I've spent an hour or two working on it, and this.
Thank you, but I can see that we're about to, so I'm just saying, again, this is the 13th time I've been through this, and at least not even here.
Well, we're improving it already, I mean, what you've done, and hopefully what I've done.
Okay, but I mean, Commissioner Baird, you know, certainly.
If you want to put economic, then we move number eight near the top, but I don't think it changes, all these things are important, this is, we should maybe take the numbers away or something, if that's.
Well, I, you know, we can get to that when we get to that number, and we can go ahead and, maybe this isn't a bad idea, wordsmith them all, to try and get the best overall message in terms of each of these categories, and then after that's done, then go ahead and see if we want to readjust it, because.
That'd be fine.
Visually, I would love to see that on the top. I mean, just because overall, that now goes ahead and encompasses everybody, and everybody could be in almost equal agreement in terms of majority-wise. So, yeah, we can go ahead and go through each of them, and then at the end, go ahead and reprioritize or readjust if we decide to do that.
Okay, and are we going to proceed through consensus or majority vote, because we're going to disagree about some of these things? And every time we disagree, are we going to take a vote?
I would say that what we should do is vote on each one, and then move on to the next one, and see if we can suspend our rules to not take public comment until we have them all, because I'm more interested in hearing from the public on what we've left out or gotten wrong with the whole thing.
Well, I don't know about that either, just because I would love, because I know, even when I sit here and we go through a whole bunch of different things, I start forgetting about that first one that we were talking about, even though I do try and take notes now, I'm learning how to try and withhold a lot of what you're trying to decide when somebody has a long list of things. So, here as a county, as a commission, and we have some, it looks like some good participants, if we didn't have any participants, I could see that, but if they want to go ahead and have some input into somebody, we don't have that many, we've only got three. So, you know, I wouldn't mind taking their comments, because it's only going to be a grand total of, I don't know, three times three, you know, nine minutes, if they have comments on three of them. Is that correct? How many, can we ask how many citizens we have here that would possibly participate?
How many citizens think they may want to comment on the individual votes that we are considering taking on each of these points in the guiding principle? Show of hands. One.
All right, good. All right.
I would say, I keep my options open. How many citizens are there?
We're all sitting here.
How many, how many non-governmental working citizens do we, or, excuse me, maybe that's not even the right question. How many don't work for Alachua County?
Your views do not count here today.
How many do not work for Alachua County? All right, there, there's a good question. Name three of them, as I had thought.
All right, then let's vote on each one, move on, and then we'll take public comment.
All right. Chuck's going to wait to get in here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I guess, maybe I'm interpreting things differently. I thought this is like a vision, this is not like we're prioritizing what we want to do, or what we would like to see done. This is just a vision for the future of the, for the community. I have no problem with this wordsmithing thing. I chose not to do that. I just wanted to discuss them, get to know them. I don't know what the previous commissions had in mind, so hopefully, I thought that we would get an overview, discuss it, and then if there was tweaking of some words, we tweak the words to make it sound much better, or to lead us in the future. But, you know, when you start talking about words and definition of words, like affordable workforce housing, what is affordable workforce housing? Is it $200,000? Is it $150,000? Or is it $100,000? Or $85,000? I mean, those are the type things that I think are bad. Recently, in terms of affordable housing, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, the chief financial officer for the state, sent out a letter where there was, in reference to an article that was in a paper about the Federal Housing and Finance Association charging a guarantee fee in terms of increasing that fee for folks who want to get into affordable housing. So, if they're going to increase those fees, for instance, in his letter, he stated that a $200,000 house with a mortgage through FXA would increase by at least $1,700, I mean, $1,700 over the life of the loan. Is that really affordable housing? Is that really helping people get into a house? We bailed out Fannie Mae, and now Fannie Mae is going to come to the state of Florida and increase fees, which is the loan origination fees. I mean, so when we're talking about affordable housing, you know, what is the definition of affordable housing? Is it a 200,000, 150,000? I'm just saying, so we don't know. So, this is just a principle. When you say workforce, affordable workforce housing, well, I don't know what that means. I'm just saying, it's just a word.
It's just the words you want.
Right. No, no, I'm just saying, when you use words, I mean, I don't know any words that are used that not spell out what is affordable in Alachua County, what is affordable.
Then remove the word if you don't like it.
Chuck, that is a problem that this commission has had, from the time that I've been here. We always kind of, we use the phrase affordable housing, but it means different things to different people.
Mm-hmm.
The construction industry, it means making all housing cheaper. To some people, including myself, when we talk about affordable housing, we're talking about making sure that people at the lowest end of the socioeconomic spectrum have a roof over their heads, and it's a focus on that end of it. So, again, it's a choice of words, and we can spend a whole lot of time.
I think we should spend our time wordsmithing this to get it, so we're happy when we walk away that it's something that reflects our vision, understanding words the way they do, and all their amorphousness. And so, rather than a speech about each one of these things, let's wordsmith this thing, get it out, and be done with it.
The point with that is, of course, that. The point with that is, is of course that just wordsmithing it doesn't get to the fact that we're going to have different ideas about each of those things.
That's fine, if we can...
And so if we can't agree on that, then we're wordsmithing something we don't agree with.
Well, this is a vision, it's not a bunch of specific policies. I like affordable housing too. I think everybody deserves it, but we have different ideas. But we can all agree that it's a valuable thing to strive for. So I move number two in the Hutch version.
I'll second that one.
Okay. Well, I, I'm not going to sit here and debate this document. I'll wait till when those things become policy, I'll voice my opinion and vote that way, so it doesn't matter to me.
Okay. I guess we could need to talk a little policy. I do have a little bit of a problem with Hutch's version number one, with the first sentence. I think we need to make some reference to...
You mean on, on, are we talking on item number one, or item number two?
I went back to number one.
Oh, okay. Oh, number one, okay.
Because it looks like we are going to have a policy discussion, and so I, I think we need to have in there a concept that's been extremely important in the county commission's policy documents for a long time, and that's appropriateness of location. The concept of our urban cluster, it establishes that, sure, it's okay to have high-density urban, medium-density suburban, and low-density rural, but where are those going to happen? It's not okay to have medium-density suburban, medium-density, in my view, out in the countryside.
Then suggest a, then suggest a sentence that says, "In the appropriate place," or something like that.
Well, it's kind of what the vision that we've had for 13 years.
No, it doesn't. The one that says discouraged sprawl, I don't like...
Excuse me, yeah.
In the rural areas, we don't like that.
I agree, I agree. I think, I'm in total agreement with Commissioner Hutch's suggestion here, in the high-density urban, medium-density suburban, and low-density rural. I mean, you look at Tioga, and Tioga is, is a wonderful example of kind of a medium-density suburban with a bit of other things involved in there. And then there's, there's people that are going to just open it up to allow people to enjoy what they would like to enjoy without limiting their ability. Go ahead and have these priorities here, and I give you a very good version of what was before. Put it down.
Well, some people's lifestyles come at the expense of others, and that's the whole idea behind community planning. And if you believe in planning, you believe that there's an appropriate place for some kinds of development, and other places...
I'm looking for you to add the words appropriate place in here somehow.
Okay, well...
So who determines appropriate?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, it's our job.
Well, there are certain things that are our job, and other things that really aren't.
And that's why, there are five of us up here. And while we get elected, and I guess some people believe that the government should not play...
Look in that sec, Mike, look in that second sentence, we'll continue.
And, and what, what I'm doing is I'm making notes in the margins, and if you're okay with some, something with the idea of adding variety, then I, what I see happening is another draft for us to approve at a future meeting.
Okay, that's fine too.
Otherwise, this thing is going to become what I just...
But we can't have a discussion unless we do it like here, so let's have this.
Right, so what I'm saying is, is every, Commissioner Baird, you do not agree. Commissioner Chestnut, do you agree that we should include some concept of appropriateness of areas?
Yeah.
If so, then we have a majority, and if we can move on, I'll submit it, we'll submit a draft later that we can approve.
That's fine with me.
Perfect.
And I'm done with number one, we can move on to number two, back to number two. And where do we leave that? Commissioner Chestnut was unhappy with reference to...
The word affordable.
Affordable workforce housing.
Well, I, I just think housing that's appropriate and affordable for both homeowners and renters. I want to get this renter's word in there, because I think that's important.
So then Hutch's version, but with...
Just my comment about renters, but there are some renters who are actually paying just as much as that one is paying for a mortgage.
But that's fine, it's, it's good for them. My, my parents are renting right now, and it's the perfect time of life for them to do that.
I agree.
It's not even affordable for both homeowners.
And, and that's where, if you're renting something, or you rent whatever it is you decide that you're going to do temporarily, and you start saving as much as you can to go ahead and then purchase that home, and you're right, with the interest rate so low, if somebody were to be, if they knew where they wanted to live for a good number of years, that would be the best alternative. But, you know, some people can rent for other prices that are better, because they just don't want that, that responsibility for, for many different reasons. So I do like that whole idea of not excluding, and I think it's just affordable housing, period, whether you're a homeowner or whether you're a renter.
I think we have consensus on that. Why don't we just send sense affordable is inherent and appropriate, let's just strike the word affordable, and I think that doesn't make everyone happy, in Hutch's version.
That's fine. So my, my big change in...
Yeah, that's fine.
My, my big change in number three is that I wanted to get the statement in there about home rule powers, and I thought that that sort of superseded just jumping right into talking about annexations. So what you see there is basically a new front sentence, and then the...
I'm sorry.
Well, just a second.
Are you my number three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did we want to go ahead and, before we finished that, I think somebody had a comment on number two, and I'd, I'd love to hear a comment.
I think what we're going to do is, is we're going to make these and go all the way through, and then we're going to take it out to public comment one time, rather than 13 or 14 times. That way, because we're not proceeding on the basis of motions on each one of these.
Right, I just think it's pressure when somebody has a comment, and we don't have that many people before the next topic goes through.
Well, that's the distinction between the board retreats and our regular meetings. The retreat is really intended as a chance for the five of us to sit around a table and have a discussion about these issues that are going to guide us through the year. So we're going to basically proceed on the path that we're on, and anyone who wants to comment, please make notes, and then we're going to, I'm going to have a time limit. You can talk as long as you want, and the time comes, if we're going to have one round of public comment on this item.
So item number three is the, this business about respecting home rule powers, and also maximize efficiency and minimize conflict. And the notion there is, rather than talk about consolidating services or any of that business, just leave it broad like that, so that it, it, it sort of states proactively that we're interested in working with municipalities with all these issues, annexation and otherwise.
Everybody okay with that language?
I'm, I'm sorry, this is just the first time I've seen this, so it's going to take me a minute or two to, and maybe this would be a good opportunity. Commissioner Hutch, could you read it out loud?
Yeah, "County interactions with municipalities will respect their home rule powers, and will seek to maximize efficiency and minimize conflict. The county will encourage orderly annexations of urbanized areas consistent with the Boundary Adjustment Act. Municipalities should demonstrate that they are including low-income and minority neighborhood areas within annexation plans, and address service delivery and fiscal impacts prior to proposed annexations."
Nicely done.
Okay, everybody okay with number three?
Mm-hmm.
All right, moving on.
And here I added conservation easements and regulatory measures, as opposed to the way we previously worded it, which didn't make a lot of...
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, number four is, "The county will protect environmentally significant land through purchase, conservation, easement, and regulatory measures, while respecting private property rights. The county will coordinate with public agencies and private partners to acquire and manage parks and open space. The county will strive to protect the health of its citizens by ensuring clean air and an adequate supply of clean water."
Everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, moving on.
The, number five, "The county will promote affordable, accessible, and efficient multimodal transportation. Rural transportation improvements will emphasize public safety and road connectivity. The county shall establish a pavement management plan and develop adequate funding."
Um, I think for number five, if we could somehow try to, especially since this is a county document, to state more specifically, and I think it's something Commissioner Chestnut also had alluded to, to work more aggressively to, because, you know, if this, if this transportation initiative takes place, and that's two years from now, if it, if it's successful, that's great, if it's not successful, we still have to keep doing something meanwhile. When you look at the problems that we're having with some of the roads, they need to be addressed, and we've been trying to do that as well.
Well, what would you suggest as wording? I think that's the most...
Probably the county promote affordable, accessible. How about if we, prior to that, we can just put, "The county will prioritize road repair and, and, and some type of a reserve structure for future road repairs as well, and have that be in the very initial sentence." Since our number one problem is deficit, and the tune of about $370 million in roads. So we could put in here, "The county will prioritize road repair by identifying those projects that need to be addressed right away, and setting up a reserve, a reserve program for, for future road maintenance."
All right, here's the way I'd suggest handling that. See that third sentence? Move that to the second sentence.
If we move it to the first sentence, I would love that.
Wait a minute, oh, you mean the third sentence?
Where it says, "The county shall establish a pavement management plan that, that, whatever you said, that prioritizes whatever," and then, and the "develop adequate funding," that's where you're talking about essentially creating a, a trust fund, or a sinking fund, or whatever you want to call it, for, or endowment for future transportation management.
Yes, and given that that is our number one issue, I would like to see that as a first sentence. And as far as the other elements, we're doing fine with that, and we can go ahead and address that as well. But I think the first...
Okay, that's fine.
I have an issue with, you dropped two of the sentences out. One of them, okay, the other one I want to stick back in, and that's the, and, and both of these, both of these...
Well, if you look back on the Byrley version, which one...
And again, I don't take ownership of this other than...
The Byrley version, or the commission version, or the...
What we're referring to is the Byrley version is the adopted guiding vision, which I don't necessarily go along with every sentence of the way, so I just want to emphasize, it's only the Byrley version.
Which, what did you like in that old version that...
And each one of these sentences has a history.
And some of them are not guiding visions, they're...
And some of them are not, and some of them are no longer an issue. And with, I'm okay with the one graded roads within the urban cluster.
Yeah, that's just too specific.
That's fine. The other one, I think, is, is very appropriate. It's a big-picture one, and I want it back in there, and that's, "The county will discourage the widening of rural," and we can phrase it a different way, but it speaks to where we're going to add capacity. And transportation and land use are, go hand in hand. And the county will discourage the widening of rural roads, and I would, and I would get rid of that phrase, and just make it a reference to the urban cluster. "County will discourage new road capacity outside the urban cluster," or "the paving of graded roads outside the urban cluster." And actually, I'm not so sure about that one.
I don't, I don't agree with the paving of roads, excluding those. I think that we should be paving some of them.
Well, what I'm saying is, we dropped that, because...
That's right, that chip seal program is a good one.
Yeah.
Point I'm trying to make, is that the gas tax already has an established work program, and so that's on rails, it doesn't really matter.
So let's get rid of that.
So, but discourage, so. I, I do want a sentence in there about where we should be adding new capacity, and related to your...
Then, then say it as new capacity, and as opposed to widening, because there are some rural roads that actually do need to be widened.
Yeah.
Just, just because they're unsafe.
Yeah, and, and in this document, there's more language.
So say, yeah, "New capacity shall be in, within the urban cluster," or whatever. I'm fine with that.
And repeat what you wanted to change, Sue.
Oh, I was just going to rearrange it a little bit, to have the county show, establish pavement management, and have that be the first sentence, and then, so it goes through just again, it's our number one.
All right, so you're okay with the language, you just want it to be number one?
I'm a hundred percent okay, but I'm, I'm happier now that's first.
All right. You okay with the changes, Chuck?
Yeah, ma'am, that's my phone.
All right, moving on.
All right, so number six, the way it reads in my version here, "The county will coordinate with the sheriff's office to establish a countywide base level of service and an equitable funding formula. The county will encourage municipalities without police departments to opt into the county's MSU, or contract with the sheriff to provide law enforcement services for their citizens." I just thought this was a more elegant way to state what we were trying to accomplish here. It's not, it's not a significant change at all.
Okay.
In other words, that they...
What we're trying to do is get to, really, what I, it looks like what I mostly did was lose the first sentence in the older version, because what we want to do is coordinate with the sheriff's office to establish countywide base level of service. That's the most important thing.
And that sentence was news at the time, it's not anymore.
Yeah, right, yeah, so that's, I think that's, that's our statement, vision, and the rest of it just sort of fills in the, the gaps.
Okay, everybody all right with that?
That was number six?
Six.
And number six on the...
Yeah, the numbering may have changed, so watch out.
No, but we're still on number six.
Well, he's looking at the way, way old sheet.
Old sheet.
I would be looking at that, man.
Set that aside.
Okay.
Although that wouldn't be bad as a reference point as well, because...
If you really want to try to...
If you want to go back to that one, that was, that was an obese mess.
That was number five on your sheet, number six on the old sheet.
And it's meant to compare to...
Right.
Number seven.
So, number seven, "The county will encourage municipalities to provide urban services, with the exception of ambulance service and emergency management functions mandated of county governments. The county will discourage fee structures and policies that differentiate between incorporated and unincorporated residents." Again...
So why is mandated of county governments better than mandated by state law?
Oh, I, I don't know, it's, I just...
State law's more clear.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, what, "The county will discourage fee structures," we have, we have separate fee structures for the unincorporated and...
Sometimes municipalities...
We'll do that.
...charge differently for unincorporated residents than for...
They used to do it for recreation programs, it's free to play tennis in the city of Gainesville unless you were a county resident, and then you paid. So we want to discourage that.
Except for ambulance and emergency.
Right. Well, those are the urban services that we're going to hold on to.
We don't have any problems with that, do we?
We have cities that would love to be in the ambulance business.
No, right, right, no, I'm just saying for, for the other examples that you had, for different fee structures for everything other than these.
I'm not aware of any right now, but it, it comes up from time to time.
And sometimes, you know, because if, if the city is, a particular city is, feels like they're the ones who made all of the investment in the infrastructure, who had no help from the, the residents of the unincorporated area, then sometimes they feel justified in, in, in the fee schedule.
And you can also, and with fire services, you could start to imagine cross-subsidies, and people get, you know, worry about that. So this just says we're trying to not cross-subsidize. All right, number nine is, "The county will address structural and multigenerational causes of poverty and homelessness. The county will encourage educational and entrepreneurial programs in close cooperation with public and private spaces."
Number eight.
Oh, "The county will encourage economic development that focuses on small and local business expansion, poverty reduction, public infrastructure investments, economic empowerment strategies, and recruitment of new businesses. An economic development plan will detail strategies and provide measurable targets." Probably the most important thing, change there was, "And provide measurable targets," because whatever the language was in the old version was way too amorphous to actually get anything done. It was like, "The county will..."
I think that was supposed to be, "The economic development plan will entail how those strategies contribute to the county's quality of life."
Quality of life, I mean, who...
Your version's clearer, so.
Yeah.
And again, most of this phrasing is straight from the original plan.
Yeah, that's fine. But I like, I mean, an economic development plan that says, "Our quality of life will be better," is different than one that actually measures what, you know, how many jobs are created, or income levels, or whatever. So I want those measurable targets. So that's what I'm lobbying for on this one.
Well, number, then...
I was just going to, I was just going to say, this is one, we probably have additional input from Commissioner Baird, and the second, the second one that Lee had submitted, we can put that up on the screen, just for information, that, that talks about emphasizing the entire spectrum of job opportunities.
Exactly.
Which was similar to what Commissioner Baird had proposed.
Right, and I wanted to read that, and see how we can incorporate either parts of it, or whatever sections of it that are, that are viable for us, and if I can just read it out loud as well. It says, "My vision embraces economic development that will bring diversity to our community. We are exceptionally fortunate to have innovation Gainesville offer high-tech jobs, 22 on five of those paths. We are exceptionally fortunate to have innovation Gainesville to offer high-tech jobs, but also need to offer other opportunities, such as businesses as light, businesses as manufacturing, or distribution centers, as illustrated by the city of Alachua. The east side of our county has amenities such as rail, and airport, and versatile highway, all which appeal to many businesses. We must be competitive and vying for these businesses." which appeal to many businesses. We must be competitive and vying for these businesses and recognize that we are competing with locations such as Jacksonville and Lexington. It is important to understand that our citizens must have opportunity for all and not just those who, that hold advanced educational degrees. And that's just kind of the reality of what's going on here. And we have other counties that are going to be vying and competing for these businesses. And we do have the structure, and, you know, one of the, one of the good ones, I guess, would be the whole Plum Creek idea. But, but the big idea here is that we need a diverse type of businesses, and the light manufacturing and trying to bring some of those types of industries here into our county is going to help. One of the bigger issues that we have is that we have a diverse workforce as well. Majority of businesses that we've been focusing on have been in the high-tech industry areas and also certain parts of the county. So I think we need to go ahead and diversify that. So portions of this, I guess, we could put in, offer opportunities through such businesses as light manufacturing or distribution centers. And just leave it at that. And, and take advantage of our amenities that we have, such as rail, airport, versatile highways, to attract as many businesses as possible.
Part of this, it's fine, some of the things you're trying to do. It just seems really, really long.
Oh, I agree. That's why right now I'm working on it to try and, I mean, I didn't know what format we were taking, so I just had to put my thoughts on the paper first. And then.
Can you break all this down into a sentence or two?
That's right. It says, "To offer other opportunities through businesses such as light manufacturing or distribution centers," period. "Our county has amenities such as rail, airport, versatile highway, all which appeal to businesses. And to maximize that, or to leverage, how about to leverage, leverage amenities such as county amenities." Somebody down there, I'll be.
We've got to, we've got to dare hope.
PDS, it's not in the Word format, so I can't extract the text.
That's right.
But I'm happy. I have a hard copy, and I'll just make notes, and then just type it out afterwards.
Okay. So the note would be to offer other opportunities, and then it's actually part of this, "Offer other opportunities such as businesses, through such businesses as light manufacturing or distribution centers," period. "Leverage county amenities such as rail, airport, and versatile highway, which appeal to many businesses." Really, those are the two action sentences that we have in that.
Kind of like adding that to legislature's number eight then?
That's correct. "Leverage our county amenities such as rail, and airport, and versatile highway."
What? Say that again?
That we leverage our amenities, such as rail, the opportunity in the highways. And these rail is going to be very attractive to businesses, for example, that have the ports in Jacksonville. They're going to be having these huge containers, and that we have the rail to transport them in there. We have an airport, rear port. And a highway system through, through rail one, through access to I-10, 75, 95. So we go ahead and leverage those amenities. That rail is really a pretty big one, that I think is going to be.
I guess it's like, I'm kind of losing you when you say we're going to leverage them. What is it you're trying to do?
Take advantage of the rail, airport, versatile highways, so that we can make these, this area show the attractiveness to businesses that are going to be coming and developing.
So you want to promote growth as a function of transportation improvements?
Actually, I don't even know if it's improvements, but we do have those available right now.
Assets.
Right. So we can go ahead and leverage that. And I think that that word leverage is probably the action verb of what we're trying to do here. So one of, one of the things to focus on, or at least try and bring in those businesses such as light manufacturing and distribution centers, really what, the big key there is that we're trying to attract those businesses that bring in the $12 to $18 an hour jobs, sprinkle the big benefits there. And so if we can go ahead and break more of those, and again, it's to diversify the economic engine that has just been one-sided and very on the high end in terms of, of the requirements for advanced educational degrees. We have a diverse population, and we need to help that diverseness also be employed through.
If I can interrupt you for a second. Propose a sentence.
Offer other opportunities through such businesses as light manufacturing or distribution centers.
Okay. Am I okay sticking that in?
That's fine.
Okay. Any other sentences?
The second one. "Leverage our county amenities such as rail, and airport, and versatile highway, all of which appeal to many businesses."
Everybody okay with that?
Fine.
All right. Now, we need to make a decision. An absolutely critical decision. Are we going to take a lunch break, or are we going to work right through?
Let's just, let's just a short one.
Mr. The other component on this was whether to job, job opportunities regardless of educational, the whole spectrum of job opportunities before we get lost in there.
Oh, just forget the rest of that. I think those two are the action sentences. The rest is an explanation as to why.
I think that's addressed in another point, too.
I think, unless you think that that would be something to.
On the top is Commissioner Pinkerson's. This one?
That Commissioner Pinkerson's? Oh, I see what you're talking. Now you're talking about Commissioner Pinkerson's.
Yeah, the second item about.
Well, that, that issue is, that you just mentioned is addressed in the original version of number nine, but Hutch got rid of it, which I want to put back in.
Okay.
I think, I think this.
That's fine. That would be a good place to put it, in context of number nine.
Well, this, this actually goes hand in hand with what I'm proposing as well, because that basically describes offering opportunities to businesses such as light manufacturing and distribution centers because less than 50% of the population holds advanced degrees or college educations. So you want to incorporate that in there.
It might be helpful, as the chair pointed out, it might be helpful to include this broader job opportunity in number nine, which goes to systemic poverty issues. And so that ties the two together, kind of a broader.
I agree with that. I think it's.
Economic development statement, and then the statement regarding poverty that ties the two of them together. It might be a helpful approach.
Yeah, I like all that.
After we have lunch.
Right.
Mr. Chair, yeah. Wouldn't it be appropriate, if you all are talking about adding language, that we also do not forget Santa Fe, the university, and the school board, in terms of the training for folks who don't have those skills?
That's right. And that would be a separate, probably under another goal that we have, is to improve training and education. And that would be, I think that that.
Being on the, on the nine, number nine?
Commissioner Ches, I think that's a good suggestion. But right now, we have to address those that don't have that. And that will, you know, a lot won't ever have it. And, you know, it's great that we're going to go ahead and get a number of them out through this opportunity. But meanwhile, for those that just don't, you know, won't, can't, whatever the case may be.
I think we're all on board with that, and it's addressed in, again, in number nine, in the original version, or the pared down version of the original version.
The Byrdley version?
Yeah. I really don't want my name attached to it, but yes.
It's you, dude. It's you.
Not me.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm having, Mr. Chair, I mean, the, the thing I'm reading about distribution centers, what is so important about distribution centers? What is the average wage of a distribution center? I mean, are we talking something above minimum wage? Are we talking about a livable wage? I mean, I don't, I don't, what are we trying to, to get here?
It just really is light manufacturing or distribution centers. Distribution centers are going to be a big component of, of businesses available, and especially redistribution centers, just because there's a lot of business services that are, so it's just an example of that. Light manufacturing, distribution, I mean, because it's a big opportunity, I think, for, for job growth.
Yes, opportunity for job growth, but is it an opportunity to eliminate poverty in our community? Because from some of the people I know who work at the distribution in Elatua also have a second job. So, I mean, I'm just trying to get to, I have no issue with it.
I'm glad they have a first job and a first class, so they have no job.
You know, I, I sit here, and I sit here, and I listen to you all, and I do not interrupt you all when you're talking. And then, Mr. Chair, I mean, I, you know.
And I'm trying to encourage a conversation, which is what.
Right. That's what I'm trying to do.
And you're right, we need to be respectful of each other. So go ahead. I don't want to have to say.
I'm not knocking distribution centers. I'm trying to find out our goal of what we're trying to do in this community. Are we looking for jobs that is above minimum wage? Are we looking for jobs that offer, I'm losing my train of thought, because I got upset. But anyway, are we looking for jobs that, a living wages? Thank you. That's the word I was looking for. Are we looking for jobs of living wages? Are we looking for jobs just offer somebody a minimum wage type of job? I mean, I know people do that, but that does not eliminate poverty. That creates more poverty, in, in my sense. So I ha, I don't knock that, but I'm just letting you know, in reality, there are still people who are working at those distribution centers who do have a second job. That's reality. And I, I just wanted to make that point clear. That's all. I mean, I have nothing against distribution centers, but I mean, if we're trying to make sure we keep a balance in our community with the high-tech folks versus the working class folks, well, I would like to have the working class folks make a living wage versus a minimum wage. That's all I'm trying to get to the point. So it's okay to have distribution centers, but I don't want to load this community up with distribution centers, and then it creates more poverty in our community. We become more of a poor community instead of trying to help people in our community. And when you create a poor community, what happens? People leave the community to go to other communities to better their, their wages and their, their living or quality of life. If we're visioning, you know, you know, I really don't see the purpose of this, to be honest with you, because it's going to lead to difference of opinions and difference of, I'm just being honest with you. We're going to, all, five of us got different ideas, different beliefs. So when, when you talk about a vision, it should be broad. It should not be specifically tailoring to something. Because I'm just saying, light manufacturing, I support, because that's more of a living, living wage type of job. Distribution centers, I'm not against distribution centers, but I am against, we're just attracting all distribution centers in Elatua County. I'm against that. I'll be honest with you, because I believe it creates more poverty. So that. So, you know, I would love to sit here and go through these documents with you, but I, I don't understand the wordsmithing. Really, when we say that, what does it mean? Do we have goals to accomplish when we make these statements? Are there goals attached to this? Or it's just an exercise of saying, this is our vision?
Well, if the right words are on here, and you believe in them, and a distribution center comes into Elatua County and wants to locate here, you'll vote against it.
That's policy.
Well, and, and I'm agreeing with Chuck here. I've always thought this document was questionable as to its value. I really think that our vision statement is contained in our comprehensive plan.
Right.
And if you really want to get a summary statement of our community vision, you go into each section of the comprehensive plan and just take out the, the goal portion. You know, you've got your goals, objectives, and policies. And the goal parts the broad language. You tie those together, you've got our guiding vision. And that's the nucleus around which we should have these conversations, because it results in changes in policy. This is not going to change anything. No policy is going to change as a result of this. So if we really want to have.
But it's a useful way for us to structure a conversation, which we're having right now.
I would suggest that a more useful way would be to actually talk about the comprehensive plan guiding vision, because that can lead to changes. This is not going to lead to any changes, other than the changes of this document. And we'll go through the same exercise next year.
It's just more of a feel-good document.
And Lee's not even here, and I don't want to do this twice.
Right, yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to get done with it as quickly as possible.
Okay. Go again.
Well, let's go, don't get tied up in semantics. Let's get, if we're going to wordsmith, let's wordsmith, and then the document comes back, then we work on the document again. I'm assuming that's what's going to happen anyway, so.
And we have, just for your own, just to see what it looks like, we've added some language that relates to the wage, you know, looking at this. I'm not sure what other opportunity means we'll offer to anybody who's doing this, but.
Can I ask, we have a representative from the Gainesville City Commission here. Warren, do you all have, does the city have something like this?
I need to.
What's your process? Do you guys do this process every year?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Warren, yes. Yes, we, we have on routine, we have our retreat similar to this. But I think I, I agree that our format is a little bit more like you suggested, in which we look at our comprehensive plan, we had that as backup, and try to keep the statements as succinct as possible. Because we all know that when we make decisions, we don't get out these vision documents and go through and check them off. It doesn't work that way. So I think, to everybody's, whatever your point of view is, I think it's, it's very wise to be relatively simple in terms of the outlines on the comprehensive plan in each of the sections.
And very broad.
Very, very broad. And, you know, you can use words that are, I think, very constructive and productive to give you the sense of where you want to go, but they're not limiting in terms of trying to be prescriptive about all the nuances and details. And I think that's what happens here. May I add one point?
Sorry.
And I won't have to jump up again. I think it's very important for all of us to appreciate the context of this job creation. And one of the things that happens when we talk about innovation and technology jobs, we're thinking white coats, PhDs, advanced education. That's not, that's not really where, what's happening. There's an awful lot of entry level, in fact, most of the jobs are entry level, in which people come in high school education. And they have a work ladder to go up, and, and a hierarchy, and, and they have a future that is, that is encompassed by the, basically, the activity itself. But more importantly, and I can quote two people here, Jane Muir of University of Florida, Technology and Licensing, and David M. O., retired from University of Florida. We all know who he is. They have numbers, and I've just emailed them both, that will explain that for each tech job we get, we get a five, a one to three, or one to one to five spinoff in terms of employment, not only for the technical sphere itself, but all the ancillary supplemental, whether you're talking about restaurants, dry cleaners, you name. So there's a whole lot here that goes into technology transfer jobs that go way beyond white coat PhDs and geeks like, I, no, I mean, it's really true. So keep that in mind. Keep that in mind, because it's not an either or situation. It's very much a continuum. Thank you.
And last night at the Regional Planning Council, we had a 45-minute presentation on Innovation Gainesville, and it showed the numbers, both the dollars coming in, $200 million in the last year and a half, in terms of new money coming into the community, and the number of jobs that created. It's huge.
Okay. So that brings us back to this document. So.
I'd offer a quick suggestion.
Please.
Offer, I don't know about the word other, but offer opportunities to the entire community that provide living wages. Does that seem?
Okay. Does that capture the essence of what you're trying to do, Commissioner Baird?
If that's acceptable to you, that's, that's fine. You want me to scratch the rest of it, or?
No, you can keep it. I just, it's just a difference in terms of what direction we want to head in. If our goal is to eliminate poverty, you know, instead of creating it, it's just.
Maybe what we need to do as a commission is actually have a discussion about our comprehensive plan, which we usually don't do, except in the 10-year cycle, and it's brought to us, and we have a huge workload, as opposed to a much more self-selected, narrow focus on those issues we think we need to work on in terms of policy. And that way, our policy discussions lead somewhere. They can lead to changes in our policy documents. This discussion doesn't lead anywhere, except right back onto this piece of paper, and then we move on to something else. And we make decisions one by one, which is how we're going to do our work anyway. But anyway, I'm happy to approve anything right now. I wasn't going to do anything at all. I wasn't going to do anything at all, and just yesterday I was reading through it and just started pulling out sentences and couldn't stop.
How about if, that provide living wages through diversity of business opportunities?
And by the way, do we want to break for lunch, or do we want to work straight through? How much more time do we want to spend on this document? Because I think this is pretty much what we've done when we're done with this, right?
Yeah.
I don't want to get into any raw discussion of principles of diversity of up a fifth member absent.
Because everybody needs to be here.
All right, let's knock this out real fast. Come on, guys.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead and finish.
Where are we?
Number nine.
Number nine. Wait a minute, is everyone okay with number eight? And if...
Yeah, she just wordsmithed it.
Yeah, we fixed that.
Okay, moving on.
To...
And then now we're in this, the county will address the structural and multigenerational causes of poverty and homelessness. County will encourage educational and entrepreneurial programs in close cooperation with public and private schools. I split off the one that says 9B below that. The county will provide social services in a plan that identifies how services, they can, that's badly worded, how they can be most efficiently and effectively delivered. And the reason I vastly shortened that one is I think this is what we ought to be doing as opposed to...
I like the reference to, because I keep hearing this from the school board members and on the campaign trail, we just went through, you all remember, what a strong emphasis there was on needing a kind of separate track in our educational process for people who didn't, aren't going to college.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And elevating that, making it meaningful, as opposed to just college and not college. And that's important, and I like some reference to that. And I know it's not really under our control, but to the extent that we work with the school board and...
Same thing with the university.
So, add that sentence from the old, from your version that talks about the Elatso County schools.
Okay. And by the way, we did, just so that we know what we're doing with Open Eyes, we did drop reference to the fairground from number eight, and I guess I'm okay with that, because that's kind of a specific.
Right, that's too specific to worry about.
But it's good on our work program.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so everybody okay with number nine?
Mm-hmm.
All right, moving on.
Number 10 doesn't really change very much. I think it's pretty much the same.
And there's no difference about this one.
I don't see any real change.
Okay.
Number 11, rather than get into the Choices Program, which after all, in another few months is going to be gone, I just said, and then Obamacare has changed the landscape, the county will promote access to universal affordable health care in coordination with other levels of government and private health care providers.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, because I believe in universal health care, but that is a very loaded word. Is that what you want to...
Yeah.
All right. Because I'm, if we do that, we can take a stand.
Well, I mean, that's kind of what Obamacare does, and that's this reference to other levels of government. Number 12, I don't think this, this doesn't really change. The county will strengthen its revenue-based diversity, diversify, fix that word, sources of funding, recapture funds that are remitted to higher levels of government, and safeguard its financial assets. The county will strive to fairly assign the costs of services to users. And the main one that I added is remitted to higher levels of government. We send more money to the feds than we get back, and so we should be capturing more of that money back.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? All right.
13, the county will empower, train, and equip our employees and partners to deliver the best public service while providing fair compensation and the opportunity to succeed.
That's, I think, where, I think we should just go with...
Well, no, this is...
This is our employees. And what I wanted to, I added the opportunity to succeed. I want, I didn't exactly want to say upward mobility, that's part of opportunity to succeed, but, you know, to grow with the job, so that's my wording there. 14, the county will reduce its contribution to global economic and environmental problems, including policies which reverse the cause of climate change, air and water pollution, and the waste of human material and natural resources. The county will do this both in its own operations and in governance.
That first sentence is ambiguous. It sounds like you're suggesting policies which reverse the causes of climate change, air and water pollution.
Yeah, I agree.
Are contributed to global economic...
It's a bad, yeah, it's a separate sentence, these policies. Put a period after the word "problems."
I'm sorry, could you clarify?
The county will improve its contribution to global economic, will reduce its contribution to global economic and environmental problems, period.
The county will...
The county will...
Promote policies.
Promote policies, which, yeah.
Or the county will seek to...
Yeah, something like...
Reverse climate change, air and water pollution, waste of human material and natural resources.
I'm having a hard time with this reverse.
In both its own operation.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I took what I was working with from Commissioner Byrd, and I tried to do the best I could, but...
Yeah, I did not write this. I had no dear language.
Everybody knows what we're talking about, just make it flow beautifully.
How about just keeping the county will...
Actually, mine, it was not mine, it was the original one, the county will work to reduce its contribution to global climate change. That captures it better than try to reverse.
Yeah, I don't like the reverse idea.
Right. But I was trying to be broader than just global climate change, global economic and environmental problems, of which climate change is obviously...
And reduce its contribution to global economic and climate...
Yeah, yeah, I like that.
But environmental problems, climate change is too broad.
I want to mention climate change.
Yeah, well, I don't have a problem mentioning climate change, but I also view it in the context of a much larger economic and environmental issue.
I don't want you to cause more pollution, you know, you're either causing more, I don't know about this, I would just say environmental problems is a great way of describing that. I think that's easier to understand what problems...
You want to say global economic and environmental problems, such as climate change, I have no problem with that.
Well, this bullet point was supposed to speak to energy and water conservation. It's getting bigger and bigger and bigger, but that was kind of where we were, we want to reduce our consumption of energy and water. And if we want to tease off a different policy for our economy and social justice and those broader issues of sustainability, it's getting real big here.
Right. Well, I don't know how to solve it, so why don't we move on to the rest of them and then...
Excuse me, where'd we end up with this? Could you take a look at what Fay has there to see if that's what you want?
The county will reduce its contribution to global economic and environmental problems. The county will promote policies which reduce the causes of climate change, air and water pollution, and the waste of human, material, and natural resources. The county will do this both in its own operations and governance.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Make her a commissioner.
That's just what you wrote, I thought we were going to go ahead and...
Well, I mean, she did, she made it flow good. Didn't really change the...
It's a lot easier when one person's writing.
Yeah, I agree. This number 15 that I put on here, the county will work with utilities to increase the use of sustainable and local energy sources and to provide incentives for energy and water conservation.
That early along, 14?
Could.
It's a subset of 14.
I think one of the things in here is to...
It's one of the many things we can do.
Work with utilities to reduce its rate.
Well, now we're getting real specific. I don't want to go there.
Now, here, if you're talking about to increase the use of sustainable, well, that's kind of the problem we're having right now.
I would ask that we just write 15.
There's a limit to that one, that was...
Because again, it is contained in the sentences in number 14.
All right, scratch 15.
It's just more of a specific strategy.
16, the county will coordinate with public and private providers to provide internet service that does not discriminate on the basis of location or other demographics. The county will work with the schools and libraries to ensure that children are provided access to information technology. This is, I think, an important thing that we got to do, and it's not addressed anywhere else.
Okay, everybody all right with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
And number 17, county government will embrace access, transparency, and ethics, and will accommodate diverse backgrounds and perspectives to strengthen decision-making and acceptance of outcomes. And this is a sort of a broad, important thing, but nowhere else in our guiding principle did we talk about ethics or transparency in government, and we've had a good record of doing that, and we should continue.
Okay, everybody all right with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, with that, well, no, we're pretty much done. We're going to open it up to the public now, anyone who wants to, yeah.
Just one question on number nine. Are you going to use 9 and 9B, or...
Well, they need to be renumbered. I didn't want to confuse people by renumbering when I was...
Okay, so, so...
There would be 10.
9B, right.
So, renumber everything below that. We lost one of them altogether, 15, so...
Okay, so, I guess we need a motion to encompass all those changes into a new draft for consideration by the board at its next meeting.
Some...
All right, moving to second, did we staff somewhere I thought we just did, and then we'll let Lee take a crack at it at the next meeting.
Meeting.
Okay, would anyone from the public like to comment on the discussion we have just had? Please come forward. Do yourself, morning.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Kara Bolton. I'm chair of the Elatso County Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and I would respectfully request that we add the word "affordable" back to the policy statement listed, I believe it was item number three, along with appropriate.
Is that number two?
Number two, please, yes.
I like that idea.
Appropriate and affordable. Can we define that?
I don't think there is a definition to affordable. And I think if you were to add a definition, it would be to describe whether affordable housing applies to a program or to a policy. And so, I think it should qualify the policies set forth by the commissioners.
Are you seeking to reduce the cost of all housing, or are you seeking to address the issue of people who are at risk of losing housing or living in standard housing? What's your emphasis?
I think our emphasis is on the cost of all housing, whether it's to renters, to tenants, or it's to owner occupants of all housing dwelling units here in Elatso County.
If I may, I think with a document of this sort, you've already heard a number of preamble statements on how this is or may not be used throughout the course of your events, having the word "affordable" in here as an undefined reminder, that any time, any time it comes up in a specific context, it should be defined within that specific context, whether it has to do with the cost of providing housing generally, or a particular program that is designed to provide housing to a certain population group. They all come within their own definition. I think by having the word "affordable" in here, it just says that issue is important, regardless of the individual context, and that just means we know that we have to define it when that particular program or specific policy statement comes before us. You can't define "affordable" generically.
I believe the word "affordable" is used in multiple line items here. If you go to number 11, "affordable qualifies health care." So, I'm simply requesting that "affordable" be used to describe housing here in Elatso County. Thank you.
I agree with her and I agree with him.
Everybody's okay with that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public like to comment on this discussion? Not in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a 3-1 vote on our guiding vision. So, do we want to attempt to have a project program or already setting discussion, do we agree that Commissioner Pinkerson should be present for that?
Yeah, we should have that. I do have two little short things to mention.
And that is next, actually, Commissioner, in our informal discussion, so go ahead.
Commissioner Pinkerson did provide his input as he was leaving, his own item on the project priorities was the fairgrounds.
Okay.
Which we just took out of the guiding vision.
So, tough on him.
It needs to be in the project priorities.
Okay, all right, yeah, I agree. All right, moving on.
So, item one is, I talked with a city commissioner and a mayor yesterday about the idea of including, for instance, two county commissioners on their utility committee on the city of Gainesville, the GRU utility committee. Got positive response, so we may well get a request across, from across the street to, for us to come up with two people to start sitting in on those committees, and that will help as we get more and more questions, and particularly this concern about, there's so many unincorporated residents who are GRU customers, then at least there'll be somebody at our diocese who is in on the discussion. So, I think it's a positive thing. It's an advisory committee to the city commission, so it gives us as a body direct input, and if we come back and say something to the county commission, you guys can give us direction to go over there and, you know...
Are they going to move on that, or do we need to...
No, I think we can, I think they should take the lead on it, and...
Right, nothing further needs to happen.
Yeah, so that's item one. The other thing is that I had a very general discussion about, I like the idea of every year figuring out what we can consolidate, merge, you know, make more efficient, and have been poking around about that. And one of the areas that I think could be ripe for merger in the foreseeable future is human resources. So, as the commission is talking with staff about how we can make things more efficient...
Between city and county?
City and county. We already do human resources for other units of government, and there's some real advantages in combining human resources for all local governments in one place, because as people are applying, they can be handled uniformly, but they can also be put into the right place. There's a lot of training that goes on in human resources that is essentially duplicative, you know, whether it's harassment training or other types of safety training and so forth, the city's doing it, the county's doing it. There's real efficiencies that I think could be achieved, and other benefits by having one human resources department that answers to, that feeds employees to both and trains them. So, just something to talk about, you know, we have, obviously have to know the details, but I wouldn't be a bit surprised if there's not savings to be had down the road if we were to do this. If there's some other department or function that people think ought to be consolidated, I'm happy for that. We already, you know, contracted for streetlight maintenance with the city. There used to be a separate city dog catcher and county dog catcher, now we have one animal. So, let's look for those things, each of us, that we think might be worth, worthy of discussion for combining. And that would be mine.
And in order to have that discussion, I guess the first thing we'd want to do is get a white paper from our human resources department and from the city resources department as to why it's a good idea.
Pros and cons.
Why it's bad idea. And, because I will not claim that I have any idea at this point whether that would be an improvement.
Right, yeah, I agree with that. So, we might want to float, float something across the street and see if there, I know there's a couple commissioners over there, but I think this is also an area that we could explore. So, small steps in the direction of consolidation or sharing services are how we will get to more efficient global justice.
Okay. You're going to move that forward at appropriate time?
Yeah, yeah, just leave it to you guys now.
All right. Is that it? You got anything?
No, I have nothing. I think that my comments will come under commission comments in a meeting, so...
Okay.
Along those lines, and I'm not even sure how viable it is, but I just wanted to go ahead and throw it out there for now. And that's, I've heard some comments about our planning groups and permitting and those kinds of things. It just makes it difficult sometimes for some folks to understand the difference between the planning and whether that's something that could make it much more streamlined or somehow coordinated those efforts, and that's just one to think about and see if there is some type of consolidation there. And then, and as far as a program priority or a project priority, one of the things that had been brought up for the Economic Development Committee on EDAC was the whole possibility of, and then actually, Affordable Housing, I think, group came up with that letter as well, and they said something to the fact that our comprehensive plan could be modified and should be looked at a little bit more, and then to go ahead and see how we can make it much more business-friendly, much more streamlined, to go ahead and make more affordable housing, and to, and it's not even just one economic area, it's just make it in general that much more economical to... make it in general that much more, more economical to purchase a home. And I'll tell you, even at the federal level, area where people have different choices in different counties or different states to move to, and they, you know, kind of, part of their surge, their job surge decision is they go ahead and take a ride with a real estate agent and say, well, let's go ahead and see what can we buy with our dollars, and how much is that going to cost us here? And so if you get the same paying job, well, one place has housing that's twice as much as the other, then that's another, now, bigger factor. So I think that that would be something to try and put a little bit more in terms of either timeframes or some type of goals to see when we can go ahead and start putting together, because I know the EDAC group had specific, had some specific ideas in their presentation for the county, and I would like to see that move forward as opposed to still sitting back there, and I'm not sure how we can do that, to try and, again, increase.
Mr. Chair, the board has already directed the staff in EDAC to come up with specific plans, and I think over the course of the next couple of months, we will have specific ideas on how to implement those general recommendations that came out of the Economic Development Plan that was provided to you by EDAC. So you've already given us direction to do that, so we're in the process of doing that now. And I think we've kind of split it up into EDAC coming up with some clarifying ideas on some of those items, and the staff is going to work independently at first, and then come back to EDAC, which I had in mind. So that's my understanding of how we're going to approach the direction we've already received from the board. So that's a priority for this upcoming year already.
Okay.
We were given, after we presented our work plan, I'm sorry, Parker Van Hart with EDAC, we were given some specific directions from a few of the commissioners after our presentation, was it two months ago? So we've highlighted those as our priorities, and our plan is, we discussed this yesterday at our meeting, our plan is, is as we make headway on those specific recommendations, we're going to come back to the commission during the regular meetings and have, you know, just take a couple minutes and discuss what we're doing and some of the ideas we've had, you know, to be a little more proactive and to keep you guys in the loop of what we're talking about, and hopefully you'll keep us in your loop as well.
That's right. And I'm not sure if it was in your group, or you were going to go ahead and take the initiative, or whether somehow within the county to also incorporate, again, the builder group and also the Chamber of Commerce, and again, the affordable housing, kind of those, any of the planning stations, just, I mean, we've got some really big opportunities out there, but how can we actually set the foundation so that they can go ahead and flourish here in Latchell County? So I think somehow putting that on top.
The Affordable Housing Committee's recommendations are in.
That's right.
In that, in that group of recommendations that we're studying to come back with specific recommendations on how to implement that.
That's right. So I think that that would be a great.
It's a combination, I don't remember what it's split up. It's a combination with, I've assigned staff to work on some of it because it really is the nuts and bolts of the development view process, rather than trying to ask EDAC to do that, and then we'll come back and have a conversation with EDAC on how to implement those things, and then bring that back to the county commission. So that's how we've split that up.
Right. The emphasis for EDAC would be in business development and.
That's not necessarily true. We're looking at economic development as a very broad thing. Just attracting businesses to Gainesville isn't going to grow economic development. Just bettering education isn't going to, you know, having better roads, just these things by themselves aren't going to do anything. So we're looking at the really big picture, and our plan is to recommend policies that direct us toward, you know, this giant vision of, you know, our main philosophy, our main idea, our main goal is zero unemployment in Latchell County. That's what we've talked about since inception, is what we want to accomplish. Shoot for the stars and reach the moon, you're doing great.
You're breathing.
Right.
You're not going to be an economic disaster, you're aware.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
How about that goes? Okay.
So, so the feedback that we got from the commissioners was very helpful, and I'm hoping that the new commissioners will look over what we presented and give us their feedback as well, because we're, we're looking to take a more proactive role. Since the inception of EDAC, we've, you know, been a bunch of people from various backgrounds and various experiences talking about what we would like to happen. Now we have a really good plan written down on paper. Now we're all itching to actually get out there and do stuff. You know, we were talking yesterday about, you know, as a, as a committee starting to write letters to prospective businesses, to, you know, be involved in this, this idea of a one-stop shopping center for businesses that are coming in, you know, being part of that, that team that, that helps, you know, a company get started in Latchell County or expand in Latchell County. So, you know, we're tired of sitting around and talking in a closed room. We want to get out there and work. So, thank you.
Appreciate you saying that. You wanted to. Does that conclude your comments?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Just one, I didn't have any, but your mention about consolidation, I would suggest that an area that's ripe for consolidation or reconsolidation would be environmental protection. Natural systems obviously are oblivious to jurisdictional boundaries, and the City of Gainesville, I know once, I think, either contracted with or did some of, some or much of its environmental work through the county anyway, so perhaps consolidate, they now have a person, I don't know if they're one person or more than one person, own staff there. So not only would that possibly achieve some fiscal efficiencies, but it would be a much better perspective if it's sitting in the county, we're coordinating its environmental policies. I can see just procedural improvements as a result of that, so maybe that's something else we ought to be thinking about.
Okay. Further comments or questions from board members? One, a final round of citizen comments. Any citizens want to address anything that we discussed today? All right. And I'll just mention that the next time we do this, I'm going to ask that we do it at the new Freedom Center.
Napaw Park.
At Napaw Park. I still have not been there, and I'd like to go out there and break in the building with a retreat. So thank you all for coming. We're adjourned.